And get the meeting started at 6:07 with roll call of officers. Carrie Christensen.
Here.
Here, very hard to hear you guys.
Roland Cuskey Jr.
Over here, can you hear me?
Michael Hartenson.
I'm having a hard time hearing you guys, I I'm here.
Jennifer Van Houten.
Here.
Chad Petrito.
Here.
Give us a second, everybody, we're gonna try to turn the volume up here.
Can you hear us better now?
Michael Mortensen, how do we sound now, a little louder?
Yeah, that seems to be much better, thank you.
Do a quick check again, alright?
Alright, um, alright, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as published?
This is Mike, I'll go and make that motion to approve the agenda as published.
Chad, I'll second.
That's a close vote. Can we change this?
No changes.
We need any changes, sorry about that. Motion carries seven zero, move on to board reports. We had, um, we had an ops meeting, um, last Monday, right? Last Thursday.
Last Thursday.
I'm sorry, is that first?
Yeah, that's first.
Sorry, public comments, thanks Beth. We do not have anyone present, um, to make comments. Um, has anyone put in the question and answer or chat to make a public comment? Looks like that's empty as well, okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to board reports now. Um, we had a ops committee meeting, um, last Thursday, and you will see a lot of the contracts, um, later on tonight for approval. Um, exciting times to, uh, kick off, um, the benefits of the, um, bond referendum that was passed. Um, you'll see a lot of those on the meeting later tonight, um, pretty much everything that was on, discussed in ops is gonna be, voted on tonight either as a, as a, under vendor contracts or individually forbidden packages, um, to accept, so. And we can discuss that a little bit later on. None of there's been any other board meetings, anyone else have anything to interrupt? Okay. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and move on to our public hearings, to get my wording up. Okay, we'll go ahead and open those up. Um, it is now the time, place, and date to hold the hearing on the proposed 2021 high school athletic tracks resurfacing project. The hub, public hearing is now open at 6:11 PM for public comment pursuant to the provisions of the code of Iowa. Are there any residents or taxpayers who would like to speak regarding this topic? Were there any written comments received? No written comments, and now declare the time for receiving objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed topic closed at 6:11 PM. Now we'll move on to public hearing for the 2021 district wide additions and renovations project. It is now the time, place, and date to hold a hearing on the proposed 2021 district wide additions and renovations project. The public hearing is now open at 6:11 PM for public comment pursuant to the provisions of the code of Iowa. Are there any residents or taxpayers who would like to speak regarding this topic? Were there any written comments received? I now declare the time for receiving objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed topic closed at 6:12 PM. Now we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you very much Julie. So we have several items tonight in superintendent's report, so we do have a very full agenda, so we're gonna try to be expeditious here, but at the same time still make sure we do our due diligence with all of our topics. Uh, the very first one is district recognition, and so we wanted to take some time and thank numerous volunteers from the Sadeel community, Sadeel staff, Cornell PTO who installed the new playground equipment. Uh, we did give out certificates of appreciation, which we gave to Jimmy Vandercamp, Carl Vandercamp, Brandon Smart, Dale Port, Brian Bowman, Ken Vanderpool, Scott Gates, Ethan Stockpower, John Crane, Randy and Dave Blankenship, Cory Dawkins, Kevin Miracle, Crystal Waters, Gary and Lisa Christensen, and Buddy Hicks. A special thanks was also given to Capital City Equipment and Tezdel Electric for providing equipment for the project. Um, the Sadeel Browns and maintenance department staff who also played key roles in the installation. Uh, their, their hard work was, was absolutely acknowledged and recognized. Here's a picture, we weren't quite finished with it, uh, actually had a lot of time out on site, which was a very exciting project to help with. Uh, and so you can see that, uh, we have some amazing equipment out there, and we just wanted to take some time tonight and really show our appreciation for those that helped, uh, make this thing happen for our Cornell playground. Gary, I know you took a lead role, is there any words you'd like to share with this project? Andrew O'Brien Vaughn, I know you were also leading this, so I'll let you guys chime in a few words if you'd like.
Uh, yeah, this is Gary, I'd just like to, to echo those things. Um, I know that, uh, the, the guy that they sent out to, to help us install was very, very impressed with not only the, the amount of help that we received, but also the capabilities of the help that we received. And I know that without everyone who, who volunteered their time and their talents, there is absolutely no way that we could have gotten this done in two days, and especially to, to Capital City and Tezdel for providing the equipment that, that made it much easier and, and also possible to, to accomplish this project in, in the time that, that we allotted. So, huge shout out and thank you to, to all those that were listed and, and the few people that we weren't able to, to gather all the, the information on, so, so thanks for everybody that's listed and, and everybody who, who helped out as well.
Okay, Mr. Vaughn, is there any words you'd like to share, how do the kids like it by the way?
Absolutely, I'll piggyback off that. Um, I'd also like to give a big shout out to Mother Nature, because Mother Nature played a key role. I wasn't sure at the time of, uh, what the weather would be like, definitely wasn't warm, but, uh, the weather was good enough that enabled us to get the people to show up and put in the hard work. Um, also, I'd like to just say that, um, you know, I just, you'll hear me say this in a little bit, but I, I feel, I feel very blessed to be a part of, of this school and of this, um, school district. Um, I wasn't sure what we were gonna get for people to show up and help us, um, and the turnout, um, was amazing. And so, um, our kids have loved this, um, and every day it's just to see their smiles on their faces, um, they're excited to see it. Um, big kids, little kids, but especially our big kids, because, um, our playground is very primary centered, um, and these pieces have given our third and fourth graders especially, um, some new pieces that they're excited to be part of as well. So, I'm just very blessed and thank you guys, um, every one of you for everything, um, that you have done and continue to do to support, um, Cornell.
Alright, so again, thank you everybody that took part in that, we, again, we just wanted to take a few minutes and recognize uh, everyone who took part in that, particularly the Cornell PTO, uh, for their leadership on that project, so, alright, anything else before we move on?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know, I know Cornell PTO, uh, spent a lot of years raising money for that, and I thank everyone's hard work to, to get that done, and everyone who contributed to making it happen, and thank you for, for that support, for them being behind the, the project. It's, it's nice to finally see something in place for, for that, and that's great.
Alright, Julie, I don't think it's, I think it's important that you also put in there that this is, um, our, to help me with the acronym, but this is our, what, what is our, um, dollars at work as well here?
Pearl.
Pearl.
Our pearl, thank you, our pearl dollars at work, I think that's, that's really important as well, so, um, that people recognize that, um, that those dollars are going to really great use, because I see people all the time before and after school, um, taking advantage of this playground equipment as well.
Using it a little more like a park, and that's great, I like that, given we don't have a whole lot of those around here, that's awesome.
Alright, and moving on, we also have some other recognitions that we typically do this time of year. The High Flyer Employee Award recognitions, we gave out earlier, and again, due to COVID and due to our limited occupancy and meetings, we did go ahead and give those certificates out, and we have some pictures down below here, and I'll, I'll go ahead and come through those a little bit more for those recipients, uh, but nonetheless, we wanted to make sure that we took the time today to recognize those people. So they, the Board of Directors on recipients of the Sadeel Employee High Flyer Program, employees were honored for their efforts in improving student achievement, maximizing resources, demonstrating innovation, and enhancing culture, image, and relationships at Sadeel Schools. Employees honored were Sherry Keegan Byer and Jessica Brooks from Sadeel High School, and I'll have Kevin talk about them in a moment. Missy Brown from Woodside, Lori Locken, and Joe Larson from Cornell Elementary School. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin for a few minutes to talk about two people that he recognized, uh, and I'll put that picture up while he's speaking about it.
So, once again, good evening, everyone, um, so the first person recognizing Sherry Keegan Byer, she does an outstanding job, and she is a model of consistency, um, really throughout her career at Sadeel High School, um, so she teaches our ninth grade students and, uh, not, knowing that most people haven't taught ninth grade students, it takes something special, and Sherry definitely has that something special when working with those ninth graders. Um, not only is she able to build relationships, but she also gets students to grow academically. Um, that's what we see on a routine basis through MAP, um, through Iowa Assessments, now ISAS, um, we see growth out of our students. Um, in addition to her work in the classroom, she plays an integral role on the high school leadership team. Um, as part of that team, um, she also leads professional development and helps facilitate professional development, um, for, uh, for teachers across our school. Um, and one of the things I appreciate most about Sherry is that she is always willing to, to speak up and ask the difficult questions, um, and, um, challenge when challenge needs to happen, and support when support needs to happen. Um, she's very good, um, about, um, ensuring that we as a team, um, are doing the right things, um, so we move forward in, in a good direction. Um, I, the, really, the, the biggest thing I can say about Sherry is she is a model of consistency, um, and a very valuable member of our team. And Jessica Brooks, um, so Jessica, she started with us, uh, last year as a teacher associate, um, and we were able to recognize right away that she was gonna be outstanding within that role. Um, she does a very good job of, um, creating or developing relationships with students, and that's a theme that you, you probably recognize between both Sherry and Jessica. Um, and one of the things early on that we were able to determine is that she, she demonstrated an ability to effectively connect, um, and support students. Um, this caused us to adjust her assignment last fall, um, which then she took on with the, the flexibility needed, and it was like a, uh, taking on like, well, I'm going to do whatever we need to, to do in order to make our school and to best support our students, and she took on, um, that role, um, with, uh, with one, one hundred and ten percent of her effort, and that has, uh, really, um, shot, her work has really shined through the student that she is working with. Um, so this, and this is the, the, one of the things I, I want you to keep in mind, so she is now, uh, she's working with a student that was previously not on site, and that student is excelling, um, at, are now onsite, and that is, uh, due directly in part to Jessica and the work that she's, um, doing with, with our, our special education students, so, um, a, a big shout out to Jessica and all of her hard work, um, with our students here at Sadeel High School.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Schulte, let's go on to the middle school, Pat.
Okay, I have, uh, I nominate, uh, Missy Brown. Um, Missy, uh, I met her early on in my time here, and I could tell that there was something, there was something special about her, how she interacts with people in general, but the biggest thing that I could say is she does an excellent job of bringing her best effort and attitude every day to her work. Um, and it, it shows, uh, the kids notice it, the staff notice it, and she's earned the respect of not only our staff, but our students, um, and the way she goes about her job and the way she interacts with the kids and the faculty. Um, she's never questioned anything I've asked her to do, and that's, that's something that is awesome. Uh, I talked to her every day, um, and it's, it's something I really enjoy, because she knows the ins and outs, and I'm still learning the building, and it, it's really important for me to understand, uh, what's going on at Woodside. Um, she's, she's never once complained about anything, um, and I'll be honest with you, right now, uh, you can go in that building and it's in, it's in showcase mode, and, and that goes to part to her, um, a huge part to her. Um, and I can't thank her enough for her energy and her personality and her work ethic that she brings to Woodside, it's, it's fun to, uh, interact every day, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, working alongside her more and, uh, doing what we can to make sure that experience, not only for staff and students, is great for Woodside, and great for them, sorry.
Thank you, Pat, and thank you, Missy. Alright, Mr. Vaughn, you're up next.
Yeah, thanks guys, um, so I'm gonna start with Mrs. Lori Locken. Um, so Lori, uh, is our reading recovery teacher, and for those of you that aren't familiar with what reading recovery is, it's offered to our first graders only, because, um, data will show us that that's the really the time for us to get to those kids that are the most discrepant, um, in terms of being behind as readers, um, and the opportunity to get them caught up on grade level, and reading recovery can change the trajectory of a child's life in terms of them as a reader, and so her, her responsibilities and roles are crucial at our school. Um, and I'm just gonna read directly from, um, some of the things that I have jotted down here, um, for her, but, um, I put Lori's work diligently to provide extra opportunities for our struggling readers. She arranges for targeted lessons that address the unique learning strengths and challenges of each individual student. Lori finds ways to make early foundational skills instructional fun and engaging to our kids, which is critical, especially for those kiddos, um, that are struggling to, to, to read and, um, put those letters in, into words. Um, she provides appropriate level of support while encouraging our students to become independent readers and writers who can participate and flourish both in reader recovery, and then take what they're learning with her and take that back into that classroom setting. Um, and so she's done a great job, um, she has a close connection with each student and maintains supportive relationships with parents, and, um, one of the things that those of you that get to know Lori and know her well, um, she has a contagious laugh, um, that is, brings such a positive feeling to our culture and our school. Um, the other, a couple of more things I just wanna add about Lori is that, um, you know, all of us as educators advocate for kids, but, um, Lori believes that every child is our child, that is her child, and she takes such great responsibility into what her role is, um, as a teacher and getting them to be readers, and so, um, she takes that responsibility for her work seriously and believes she is there to support the work of classroom teachers also, by helping students reach those grade level standards. Uh, she does a great job of communicating with all stakeholders, um, and readily shares her observations of students' strengths with her classroom colleagues. Um, and you know, um, Lori was with us, um, early on while I was here, she left us for a few years and has come back. Um, just in the short time of being back, Lori is a building leader for us, um, and she leads by example, and she leads through her, um, work that she does as a professional. Um, and so we're blessed as, as a school at Cornell and as a district to have Lori back, um, and, and her work with our kids is gonna continue to pay dividends, so thank you Lori Locken. Um, the next person that I wanna make sure to recognize, um, is Joe Larson, so Joe Larson is a preschool associate, and, um, Joe is, uh, one of the, um, most amazing associates, and we have a lot of amazing associates, um, at Cornell. Um, he is a, is a, um, always excited to start our preschool day. Um, you know, we say that, um, he's the glue that keeps the preschool room together, um, because he's doing so many other things when our classroom, when, uh, Ms. Bader is, is focused in with her kiddos in small groups or one-to-one. Um, and, and Joe does a great job of taking all kids and making them feel like they're his favorite. Like, if you probably asked any one of those kids that have, um, had any interaction with Joe in preschool, they probably all would tell you they feel like they could, they were his favorites, um, and he brings such a positive energy to our school every single day to help keep that, um, climate and culture going, um, and it just can't be matched, um, Joe never hesitates to ask questions when he's unsure, and as soon as you tell him, he just jumps in and does it, so, um, I could go on and on about Joe, um, I hope that, uh, someday he has the opportunity to get back to school um, and start working on an early childhood education, because that's where he belongs, this is his fit, so, um, we are blessed to have Joe as an associate, um, and working with our kids and our families.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Vaughn, and I'd just like to send one more big thank you out to all the recipients of the Sadeel Employee High Flyer Program, they're well deserving, uh, and we're very proud of them, so thank you everyone. Board, is there any comments you'd like to make before we move on?
That's a great job by, by all of you, and it's just, it's great to hear that, um, people are going above and beyond, especially, um, you know, during, during the time we've had this last year.
Alright, next on the agenda, we have a holiday music performance that was presented, uh, by Sadeel students Rachel Barton, who's a junior, and Justin Scott, senior, uh, they were recently selected into the honor band for the South Central Iowa Bandmaster Association. So I'm gonna take a quick moment here and open these up, I'm gonna go back and get the other one moving as well. They do take a second, so give me one minute. And they're only a couple of minutes each, but we'd like to play them in recognizing them. Alright, so this is our first one, Justin Scott. Maybe a minute here.
Alright, hold up here, we're gonna stop for a second.
Julie, would you pull that up?
Yep.
No, no, you would just pull it up on yours. I'm gonna have Julie go ahead and pull this up on hers, in the meantime, while that's uploading, I'm gonna go ahead and, and onto the next agenda item, and we're gonna come back to see if that's okay with everyone, and then we're just gonna play it off of Julie's computer. Again, we're still trying to get to know our new technology, so I apologize for that. In looking at item D under the superintendent's report, one of the things that we like to do is engage the board, uh, in our calendar discussion. We're about to begin, start to, the twenty-one, twenty-two master calendar work, uh, in committee, and we, before we do that, we always like to ask the board for input in things that you would like to see in the calendar or not in the calendar, based on past practice, based on some of the past calendar. So at this time, I'm gonna open it up just for some general comments from the board around, uh, master calendar for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Todd, this is Jen, and, um, I think on a normal year, it has been nice to get out before, um, Memorial Day. Um, so that's one of the things that's always kinda nice, and then always wanna take into consideration, um, how our conferences impact our teachers and how much time they're working dur- during those weeks. So, wanna be cognizant of those, those things, and also just, um, like having, um, the ability to have that input and reviewing that in the calendar committee meetings.
Okay. Alright, so I, if I heard you correctly, just making sure or working hard to try to get out before Memorial Day, and I don't think that one's too tough to manage for most years, this year would probably is a little, gonna be a little bit harder than that. Um, and then just in terms of conferences, being very cognizant, making sure we get plenty of input from teachers, not to overwhelm them on, uh, conference weeks. Thank you, Jen. Other comments or other input from the board as I begin working with the committee here? And what I like to do, by the way, is just give them this information upfront, so they understand what the board is looking for, and then we just build the calendar accordingly, uh, along with their input.
Do you wanna do, I've got.
Yeah, we'll move on to that, yeah, just a second. I'm gonna give you a few more seconds for wait time. Going once, twice? Alright, let's go back to that student performance, and at this time, uh, Julie has the student performance up, and she's just gonna go ahead and play it for us. This is Justin Scott.
Todd, if you stop sharing, Julie should be able to share, to show that at the same time.
Can you? Alright, for the second student, we have Rachel Barton.
Hey Todd, are we supposed to be able to hear it?
Yeah, the video's coming through now, but the sound's not.
Yeah, we can't hear it, I thought you guys were still working out the, trying to present.
Hang on a second, guys. I think we need that before, have you had to pull out your speaker?
What's gonna pick us up?
Alright, we're gonna try this one more time here, everybody. All right. Scott sharing?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, everybody. So, in moving on, first of all, thanks for hanging in there with us. So, we're still trying to figure out this new technology. Moving on, I have a student here today to do the student report. So, Naomi, I'm going to turn it over to you for your student report. Why don't, Naomi, would you move a little bit closer? You have to speak real loud, okay? All right. Go ahead.
As the first semester comes to an end, students are trying to work on their final grades. Our girls' basketball team won their first game of the season right before winter break, which is a highlight. Both boys and girls' basketball have many more games to come in the next five weeks. SADL Wrestling also competes in weekly duels and Saturday tournaments. Cheer squads are involved in cheering at as many games as they're able to. At the middle school, the events will be starting back up soon as well. Both girls' basketball and wrestling is part of a split season before winter break. All of the middle school wrestling needs that were canceled for December have been rescheduled for later on this month. And the boys' basketball season is underway for January and February. Clubs such as Anime Club, E-Sports, Fan Club, Mock Trial, and NHS are all meeting on a regular basis while also organizing various events and participating in numerous.
Thank you, Naomi. Do you have any questions for Naomi?
Great to see you at a meeting.
This is, is this your first official report? Well, very good. Thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you so much. Good for coming in tonight as well.
All right.
Todd, do you want to move the speaker back?
Yes, ma'am. So, in moving on, we're going to go ahead and work into the principal report.
I will go ahead and kick off the principal report.
All right, Kevin.
All right. Yep. So, the first piece, you can see that I know Todd is sharing at the moment. It is the district report from the Gallup survey that we had our students take earlier in the fall. A couple of things with the survey, I know Pat will mention it as well. The number of students that we took, excuse me, that took the survey this fall was down at both schools. So, for example, at the high school, we had about 50 fewer students take the survey this year than what we had last year. We had approximately 260 students who took the survey this year. One of the things, so you can see some numbers right there where it talks about the engagement index, the percentage of students that are engaged, not engaged, and actively disengaged. Which is, I mean, those are numbers that, I tell you what, the actively disengaged one, every time I see that number, it does make me, it does make me cringe. And from a high school perspective, the way that breakdown actually looks is that there would be 42% that are actively disengaged, 31% that are not engaged, and then 27% are engaged. And I think one of the things when we take a look at what, within the pieces there, each one of those questions tells a little bit different story and tells a different thing, either things that are going well or things that we need to continue to work on. So, one of the things that you'll hear both Pat and I talk about are one glow and grow from each of the categories. So, when I take a look at the engaged portion of it from a high school perspective, the one that I identified as a glow for the high school, and the reason why I identified it as a glow for the high school is because we've seen continual growth in that number over the last three years at least. And it is a score that I feel I'm pretty comfortable and confident about. And that's the adults at my school care about me. That's something that's extremely important. We talk with teachers about from the moment that they enter into our building. And then the one that's a grow for us is in the last seven days, someone has told me that I have done good work at school. So, this is something that we need to continue to ratchet up and make sure that we come back to revisit from a high school level on a daily basis. And those are some of the things that when we get in the busyness of the thousands of decisions that teachers make in a day to really stop and say, you know what, I do need to recognize the positive work that the students are doing within my classroom. And I say teachers, but I also need to be saying myself and Alex and Levi and our associates, so the individuals within our building, we all need to be making sure that that is something that's on the forefront. I actually identified something that said, I categorized it, things that make you go hmm. So, the question, I have a best friend at school, that one actually dropped. And when I take a look at like the drops from this year to previous years, this was the one that like there was a significant drop to this number. And so, recognizing that our circumstances this year are much different, but that is one that I think is a byproduct of the circumstances that we're in. That, at least in my mind, that is the only thing that I can point to of why, because it is a significant drop. When we have changes, when most of the other numbers are pretty small, but that one was a pretty significant drop. With the hope category, you can see, thank you, Todd. So, that hope category, you can see the district numbers from the high school percentages. We have 43% of the students are classified as being discouraged, 24% classify themselves as being stuck, and then 33% classify themselves as being hopeful. One of the things I want to highlight as far as the questions there, that first one, I know I will graduate from high school. That is one that is one of our higher scoring ones on the whole survey. I think that also coordinates with our solid graduation rates that we typically see from year to year. So, not only, students have that hope, but I believe they also know that they have adults there that are willing to help them. From the grow, I really kind of identified and attached two different ones here. So, this one underneath the hope, I can find many ways around problems. I attached that one also to underneath the social emotional learning, or excuse me, not the social emotional learning. The, my apologies, the belonging one. And that's on the next page. So, there's one within the belonging that says, if I were in trouble, there is an adult at school I can count on to help. And that in our survey, and that's a new category this year, and that's a new, and that's a new question, that's a new question. So, attaching those two, knowing that students feel confident that they have an adult that's willing to help. I think for us to continually highlight that and make sure that students know that, hey, there are adults that can help, but then also help them identify ways that they can find ways around various problems. My things that make you go hmm from the hope one is this is the category. In all the, in the engagement one, most of them were up. There were a couple that were down from a high school perspective. Underneath the hope category, this was the one indicator where every single average dropped. And so, when I think back to, well, what is like the one thing? Because that's something that's never happened in the past. And so, I keep thinking, all right, so what is, what would be some of the reasons for those? Some of them were insignificant drops, ones that would probably say statistically insignificant. But there were some that were pretty decent declines from that hope, from that hope area. And then, one of the mentioned, I already mentioned something with the belonging. As far as the glow, if I were in trouble, there's an adult at school that I can count on. That was the highest scoring one from the high school within that area. So, that was one that I feel comfortable and confident that the adults in the building, we are making a concerted effort to ensure that we're here supporting our students. Which I'll mention again, I'm very proud of the work that our staff does on that. And then the final one, so there's hope belonging, the belonging was a, was a new category this year. And the final one is also, was also a new category. I just want to make sure that I have the right information for you. It's the social and emotional learning. And if you can see on a district level, it's also big from the high school level as well. That first question on there, when I am angry or upset, I'm very good at explaining what is being, or excuse me, what is bothering me to other people. That was by far our lowest score throughout the entire survey. So, I believe that is something from a high school perspective, from a district perspective, for us to be able to focus on and figure out what are the ways that we're going to do, or the things that we're going to do in order to help students really explain and what's bothering them. That's conversations I know Alex and I have when we talk with students, when there are behavior concerns. And oftentimes, communication is the biggest factor in some of those behavior concerns. So, I think if we can make a concerted effort on a building level to help students better communicate, better explain, we can help those students be more productive in getting help from the adults that are there to assist them and peers that they're working with. What questions do you have for me about high school Gallup results?
Hey, Kevin, this is Chad. Just curious if the kids are back in school full-time, do you think these numbers would be better?
The one thing, Chad, I would say, the question about I have a best friend at school, I probably would feel pretty confident that that number would go up. Just because like the amount that that number went down, it was like, I mean, it is, it's the one thing that sticks out drastically from the survey when I make comparisons to previous year. So, that one is one I feel would probably go up. The hope, I can't, I can't say yes or no on that one, because the other thing that made me go hmm was like all those hope scores dropped. I can't definitively say, yes, this would be the one thing that changed there, just changed there, just because I know that there are a whole bunch of other factors that are going into that hope category as well.
But if they're at school, they're getting constantly reinforced with positive, I hope with positive environment where currently they're only in school half the time. So, they're only getting probably half the reinforcement.
Yeah. And I would say like the, our grow, Roland, you bring up a great point. Our grow for that engagement is making sure that we are reinforcing our students or at least telling them they do good work on a more regular basis. But yeah, I would say that the more that we have students in school, then the more we can provide that feedback to students. Or I should say, the easier it is to provide the feedback to students.
Any other questions for Mr. Schulte? All right, Mr. Schulte, thank you so much for presenting that to the board here. And again, I know that you'll garner great information that and set some additional goals for your building. So, again, we appreciate it. All right. Pat, why don't you go ahead and go next since you guys both gave a gap?
Yeah. Thanks, Kevin, for starting us off and making it very difficult for me to follow that. But as we go into the engagement piece at Woodside, what I want you to know is to get middle school students to do a survey is pretty tough. We did have some logistical with the link not working, but we did get just about half of the kids to be able to do the survey. And as you go on the engagement piece, I'm not going to get, I mean, I can get into the district numbers, but I think Kevin already discussed that, but glows and grows from each category. Which, this one kind of shocked me. You know, you have the engagement piece and you have, I have a best friend at school. Well, those of you that have been in middle school, that changes week to week. But it was, it was our highest score in that category and it was really high that I thought. And then our grow area, which hopefully we can, we will work on, was I have fun at school. And that one, that one kind of hits home for me because I wouldn't do what I do if I didn't have fun. And I guess I just want us to be able to work with the kids and have fun with them and making sure that they're enjoying what they do while learning and growing, not only academically but socially and emotionally. So, that one, that one, obviously, we're going to hit on really hard. Because obviously, if they're having fun in school, they're learning. If we go to the hope, grow area is I can find many ways around problems. I mean, it wasn't terribly low, but it was, it was the lowest one in that category, which, you know, middle school is a lot about problem solving, not, I mean, not just middle school. I mean, you know, life is about problem solving. So, that's something that we have to work with and make sure we're putting our kids in situations where they can work themselves out of in a good way. And then, what I was pleasantly surprised about on this one was our highest score was I know I will graduate. And we know that's a pinnacle of our kids' academic career up till that point. And graduating from high school is a huge accomplishment and something that they should be very proud of. And I'm glad that that was our highest score. But obviously, you know, I'm one of those people that look at, look at what we can build on and what we need to work on. And so, I'm looking to figure out how we can find ways to put our students in situations where they can problem solve and get themselves, work themselves out of situations and build upon that. Obviously, like Kevin said, belonging is new. But our lowest score there, which is kind of weird. I mean, they said best friend was the highest and in this category, lowest was my classmates care about me. I guess a place where we need to make sure that we're seeing kids' interactions and engaging with them and making sure that they know how to act around one another and they know how to accept people, regardless of where they come from or what kind of background they have. So, I think that's a good place to start there. Our glow there is if I were in trouble, there's an adult at school I can count on to help me. Okay. That's awesome. At least they have someone that they can go to. And I think that's a big thing at the middle school level is making sure that our students have a little bit of trust in somebody and that they can, you know, they can go to someone if they truly need to. And I've been trying with some of our kids to make sure that they know they can come to me. I'm not going to sit there and, you know, dwell on the negative. I'm going to give them their time and listen to them and making sure that I can work through the problem with them. So, hopefully that can spread. And then, last one, obviously, it's a new category too, so we don't have no baseline there. Our lowest score there, and this is, this kind of goes along with the previous category. When I'm angry, upset, I have very good. When I'm angry, upset, I have very good, I am very good at explaining what is bothering me to other people. And I think that for us as adults in the building is getting to know our kids and building those strong positive relationships with them and building that trust. And I know that's, that can be difficult for some adults to, you know, get down to that level and actually work with those kids, but I think it's a, it's, it's very important, especially at this age, because ultimately what we want to do is make sure that when they leave Woodside, that they're ready for the high school and ready for those, not only the academic area, but the social emotional area and make sure that they are prepared to have those conversations, those interactions that they know how, they have to make a decision. And they know that they have to talk themselves, talk with other kids and adults and make sure that they know how to act and know how to work themselves through a situation. The glow there is, and this is one of the highest numbers, I am very good at listening to my friends when they're angry or upset about something. And the only reason I chuckle is because drama, drama tends to gravitate towards the middle school level. So that's the only reason why that, that one kind of makes me chuckle, but it's good that our kids have someone that they believe they can talk to, at least. And I'm hoping they're talking to someone that can work themselves or help them work through a situation that may be negative in nature and try and help them do the positive thing. And I think that's what we need to work on as a staff to make sure our kids make positive choices, no matter what they're doing. And that's something that we'll continue to work on. So that's Woodside. If you have any questions for me, go ahead and.
Questions for Pat? All right, Kevin and Pat, thank you so much for giving us an update on the Gallup poll. Mr. Vaughn, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you. I know you give slightly a different type of a survey to students, so while I'm opening that up, I'll let you go ahead and introduce it.
Yeah, absolutely, you guys. We don't have a Gallup survey for elementary age kiddos, but what we did about four or five years ago is we took the Gallup survey questions and tried to create a survey that asked similar based questions at an elementary age, elementary appropriate age type survey. Over the course of the last couple, two or three years, we've brought this down to second through fourth graders, just because they have a better understanding of what the questions are that we're asking. So you'll see that as we continue to move forward, that this is a survey for our second through fourth graders. We ask a number of different questions within the survey. I'm just going to point out to you what I saw as our glows and grows throughout the survey. So, and it actually, it's having not had any conversation with Pat or Kevin, it makes me feel better that we as well had a harder time getting a full number of students. And we're about 100 students less than the previous year. So when you compare fall 19 to fall 20, just know that we have about 100 less kids. It is just more challenging under that hybrid situation. But what did I see as a glow? I saw as a glow that students feel that they are being treated fairly and that they are respected by their teachers and principals. So our kids see that as a positive. They recognize that, they know that. And so I think that's definitely a glow. To piggyback off that though, when you get into the survey, a growth area that I think that we have as a staff is that our students say that students don't feel respected by each other and that they're unsure if they're cared about by their teachers. And so at first, when I was starting to think about that and I has engaged in some conversation with Ms. Kuntz about this, to try to unwrap that a little bit. We're led to believe that we wonder that if, if our staff are helping students make the connection to safety of following rules equals that we care about them. So as our, our students say that they feel treated fairly and respected. And so as we talk about soaring and being safe, open mind, accountable, respectful, are our kids making that connection that, you know, when we talk to them about those things, that, that means that we talk to you about these things, we review the rules, we talk about natural consequences because we care about you. And so that is something that I want to continue to lick a little bit deeper into is, as we engage in conversations as a staff, that, that we make sure we're telling kids like, this is a big part of what we do because we care about you as a learner, because we care about you as we want you to have friends. And so that's just a piece that I look at a grow. The other grow that I want to touch a little, touch base on a little bit is from year to year, our, last year to this year, our kids continue to say many students want to be challenged more. So I want to, I want to take a look as we continue to go through this school year, as we move forward into the future about differentiation and making sure that our kids are, all kids are feeling like they are being challenged at their levels. And so those are the two, when I think about glows and grows based off the survey that you see in front of you, those are the pieces that come to my mind and through some conversation with Mrs. Kuntz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Questions for Brian? All right, it sounds like all three of you have great thoughts on goals you want to set and work you want to do to improve this data. And would absolutely echo what some of you are referring to. These are difficult times under the pandemic and under COVID. I am certain that that had an effect on, on some of this data, but nonetheless, it still gives us great focal points to continue the work that we're already working on in building greater relationships. So thank you, principals. Is there anything else before we move on to the next agenda item? All right. And moving on, we have two agenda items here and I wanted to end the superintendent's report with a COVID-19 report. Board, I know that you get reports from me, maybe not every single day, but pretty regularly throughout the week, just about where we are with COVID. Obviously, we have an agenda item next about return to learn. So I'm hoping to fill some of those gaps with the information. And I wanted to just kind of review some of that with the public as well. But again, many of you are already getting some of this information. So just to kind of start things off, most of you are aware that we have a dashboard on our website and in that dashboard, we report out several points of data. We report out active cases and active close contacts or related high risk symptoms by employees, number, percent, and then by number of students and percent of students. At this time, we have one employee who has an active case, in other words, tested positive. And we have three staff members that are, have been in close contact or related higher risk symptoms for four total adults. That equates to 1.8% of our overall staff. We have currently four students who have tested positive and 36 students who have had active close contacts or related high risk symptoms for 40 students. That's 3% of our student population. Overall, in our entire district, we have 44 people that are being impacted for an overall rate of 2.9%. I'm gonna pause right here for a moment because, and board members, if you did not take a look at your email today, I did send an email around this absenteeism number. Upon request, there's a few of you that have requested some additional information about this absenteeism. And the question came up, which was really about of students and of staff members that were quarantining, what percentage have continued to attend class online and learn and complete assignments? And then the same being true for staff members, only what percentage have continued to provide educational services from remote while quarantining? In other words, they were either quarantining from a close contact and did not have any symptoms and or did not necessarily test positive, they just came to close contact. And so I wanted to just review that as part of my report today. And board, again, if you had not had a chance to take a look at the email, in essence, across the district, we had more than 50, between 50 and 60% of students that continued to learn and complete assignments. And we had a vast majority of staff that continued to teach from remote while quarantining. And I can break that out a little bit more. At Woodside, we had approximately 70% of staff that continued to work because they did not have symptoms. We had 86% of staff at Cornell continue to work. And we had 92% of staff members continue to work at the high school. And the reason that this becomes important is because the word absenteeism rate really does not necessarily mean people are not accessing education if they're students and are not completing function in their role if they are adults. And so if you were to take a look at the four people, they're employees and you think about the number of that vast majority, and again, I did not average all three buildings, but if I were to sit here and do it now, it would be probably upper 80s or at least in the mid 80s. So of those four people, several of them would still be working or are currently working as they are quarantining. Or three, at least three of those four people. Students, so again, 50, closer to 60% of students are still participating in classes and are still continuing to do their work. Of the 40 people, obviously you can do the math on that. It's a significant number of people that are continuing to access education. So we really have to analyze that absenteeism when we're looking at that from who's still participating, can we carry out services as a school, if several of our adults, for example, are still able to conduct and their functions and their roles from remote. And continuing with the, the report here and the things that we really focus in on in the past, and I think there's some additional work we probably need to start thinking about as we move forward because we're evolving and we're learning in our understanding for COVID in this pandemic. Where we were two or three months ago may be very different with our thinking and the things that we've learned about how this impacts school today. The second one, that's a pretty important one by the state, is the 14 day positivity rate. 14 day positivity rate is at 14.7. That number has increased since break has ended slightly, but still fairly stable. In other words, I think it's gone up in that first week, but it's really flattened out in the last few days. I think today it went up point or one tenth, I believe today as compared to yesterday. The seven day positivity rate, and this is one that's starting to become more important, that's at 12%. And then the 14 day at Polk County is at 15.2%. I believe yesterday was 15.1, so that also went up one tenth. The Polk County 14 day by zip code 50313. Yesterday, that was at 15%. Today, it's at 13%. So that did go down. And again, this one's a little bit more fickle in terms of a data point. It does change a little bit differently than some of the other data points that you have above. Just to kind of put that in perspective, and I'm just going to kind of remind everybody where those numbers were last Friday, 14.7, 12.4, so that number's actually gone down for the seven day. 15.1, so that's increased by a tenth since Friday. 15% was the 50313. And we were at 2.9%. So everything's pretty stable. A few of those numbers have actually gone down and a couple have gone up a tenth. And then on the internal reporting by building, and I'm just going to go over this, I've got a copy of it sitting in front of me. At Cornell, employees, we have 1.1% that are currently out sick or quarantining. 2.2% on students for a number of 12 students at that building. Woodside, we have 3% of staff that are either active cases or quarantining. And students, we have 5.1% or 20 students for a total of 22 people. At the high school, we have 1.6% of employees. We have 2.1% of students, which is nine students for a total of 10 people. So again, you can see that numbers are fairly stable. And they're again fairly low. I think again, the highest would be the Woodside Middle School at 3% for adults and 5.1% for students. All right, I'm gonna keep moving here if it's okay with everybody. A couple other things. So that was one of the big ones that I wanted to just kind of make sure that we articulated. And again, I hope everybody had a chance to take a look at that. A couple other points that I know that we've talked about in past meetings are the holiday numbers. The holiday numbers, you know, we were a little bit thinking, wait a minute, let's see what that looks like. So it's been a number of days, enough days that we would probably start to see an increase. And so again, we're getting very, very comfortable with that holiday spike. We still have a few weeks in January. I know there's been talk from at the national level that we're still looking, you know, for a spike. But at this time, we're fairly stable. I just want to reiterate a couple other things, you know, we're, we are evolving our understanding and learning around COVID-19. We know that schools tend to illustrate low transmission rates. And a lot of that has to do with the great efforts that are taking place. The masking, the, you know, making sure that people are sanitizing, making sure we're being very diligent, you know, in making sure that people are being mindful of COVID-19, watching for symptoms, checking. We also know that several schools that have been in full occupancy have proven that these mitigation efforts do work. We have schools all around us that are currently on their way back to full time. And so the conversation we're about to have, I think, is a really important one. And then I think, you know, there's a number of things and I mentioned this earlier. You know, we have to make sure that we're being fluid, responsive and swift in our responses to make sure that we're responding, whether it be at the classroom level, the grade level, into our building level as we continue to address this. And obviously, we want to recommit at a much higher level for mitigation efforts to ensure that we keep everyone safe. Other than that, I'll go ahead and take questions because I know in the next agenda item, there's probably much more discussion. And if we can be fluid here, we can probably transition if need be. But I just want to open it up for questions before we get ready to move into a return to learn update conversation.
And I, I just wanted, I know Woodside, we've got that 5.1% for students. And, and that does include those that are quarantining, right?
But that is correct.
Potentially.
Yep.
Participating.
Yep. I'm sorry, Mike?
Todd, if you could go back and just kind of help on that spreadsheet, when we had applied for our waiver with the state previously, what were we at for our positivity rate?
Which for absenteeism, is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at the county 14 day positivity.
Yep, on the 14 day, let me make sure I'm in the right category here. In Polk County, the state was at 21. It was over 20% for the state. 17.6 is when we, the first time we went all the way up to 19 as a county, 19.6. And then we applied for a second waiver of 18.6. And our zip code was at 17 and 21. You can see those two numbers right here. Our absenteeism, and again, this is why it's important, we're learning that of the 7.7%, for example, many of those people were still participating, same with the 5.8. And that's, that's just something that we, you have to, you know, we have to experience and learn to understand how that is actually playing out. So that's when we applied those, for those two waivers, Mike.
Thank you.
You bet. Other questions or comments?
Can we go back to that so I can see that bottom row? Because I was thinking that you said that the numbers were evening out, but it looks to me like every one of them's going up.
In the last week or so, so this was this number, this is last Friday. This line here, number, line 20, 25. Line 24 would be the Friday prior.
Thanks for sharing that.
Other questions, comments about the report? All right, Julie, that's all I have for my report.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll go ahead and move on to our return to learn update. And ask everyone to kind of chime in on what they've heard from Todd and what they're thinking and if they've got a motion in mind. I, I know at our last meeting on Monday, I know at our last meeting on Monday, I charged you with a task of trying to figure out a potential percentage where we could all go back to a hundred percent. And after thinking about that, I really came to the conclusion that I don't know that there's any magic percentage number to say when is a good time for us to come back. And what I mean from that is if we were to say tonight, potentially, if Polk County on a fourteen day average was between ten and twelve percent, we would go back on whatever date. So we come to whatever date, and guess what, it is below that. And we voted to go. What happens when a week later or two days later, now it's over that twelve percent? As we're seeing that yo-yo that Todd just showed, especially I think of that five oh three one three, that, that local zip code number. When do we do that on Wednesday, when it does go back up? Do we re-vote and say now we're not going to? I mean, that to me was kind of my aha moment. I had a couple aha moments this week, that was one of them, is how, how do I put a percentage in any motion to return to a hundred percent knowing the ebb and the flow and the up and the down that it's constantly doing over the past, however many months we've been in school now, we've all seen that. And my other aha moment was why back in October, November, did I vote to go virtual? And my aha moment there was, I based it on the number of children in quarantine. We had upwards of a hundred children at the high school in quarantine. And that equated to me is we had an entire level of class out of our buildings, not learning, not learning was in my mind. They're not learning, when in actuality, they were probably still learning. They just weren't physically in our building, they were doing the virtual model already. They were learning from how they weren't sick, they weren't in bed, and that's, that is kind of why I asked Todd to just dig in a little deeper. Because those are just my, my, my two things that just came to me after all this time of looking at data is what truly is going on in our building? And are the efforts that we are putting forth on a daily basis mattering? And I do think they are mattering. I think we're, we're making every effort to make sure kids are masked, that they're standing, doing the sanitizing, the hand washing. We're putting the plexiglass where needed. Our janitors are going above and beyond to do what they can, both in the buildings and on our buses. And I, I'm to the, I am, you know, I, this is a hard choice, no matter what we do. We know that, we've been in this boat for the last six months with each other, trying to figure out what is best. And it, and we've, I think we've all figured out, it's a no-win situation, no matter what we do. We're going to have people on our side, people that don't agree with what we do. But I, I think right now, it's time for us to, to think about dipping the toe a little bit farther in and having faith that our administration has put forth what they need to, to mitigate and keep everyone as safe as possible. And, and that will also be willing to raise the red flag when it's, hey, we're in too deep, we need to take a step back. Those are, that's just where I'm kind of, and I really wanted to just explain from Monday to today where I'm at with that whole percentage. And it was mostly, I, I feel like if we, if we do go a hundred percent, we are going to have some yo-yo going on if we have an outbreak in a grade level. Or if we've got cafeteria staff at, at the middle school that can't perform their work, we're going to have to pull the plug on a middle school potentially. We're going to have to pull the plug on fourth grade if we don't have fourth grade teachers. Those are the things that going a hundred percent are going to mean for our community. And if our community is a hundred percent behind being willing to do that, I am, as a board member, am willing to give that a shot. And I would rather have it be based on what is actually happening in our building rather than trying to yo-yo between what Polk County's number might look like today versus tomorrow versus Thursday versus next Sunday. As we noted, that ebbs and flows constantly. So those are just kind of my two cents for what I, I kind of laid out to the board members over in an email over the weekend. That's really what I shared with them of, of kind of, I, when I met with Todd on Friday, I didn't have anything planned going into our meeting other than to say, hey, how are things going? And just started, things just, for me, started clicking in a different direction. So I, I wanted to be upfront and, and let our constituents know what I said out to our board members. We, you know, truly believe in public meeting laws and I want you to know what I, what I kind of changed from my charge on Monday to them as a different way to maybe look at some things that could maybe get us headed in a direction of getting more of our kids in our buildings. And also at the same time, if we were to make that choice, to understand that you absolutely will have the option to go virtual if, if that is not something that you want for your child to be in our buildings a hundred percent. We are more than willing to, to get you into that virtual model so that, that you can continue to educate your child in a manner that is safe for you and your family feelings and thoughts around the subject. So I, I wanted to lay that out again. I, I feel complete honesty is about the, the best we can offer to our, to our constituents and, and that, that is what came from me on Friday to the board members to, to just think about it a little bit different and then consider making a motion that doesn't contain restrictions around a percentage. I'll, I'll leave it at that and let others chime in, so.
No, this is Chad, I, I agree with what you, what Julie's saying, and I think we do need to get the kids back in school. I think we owe it to the, the kids in the, in the community, the parents. And, you know, I think if, like Julie said, if we have a grade level that, you know, there's an outbreak, then we can, we can deal with it on a smaller level rather than have to close the whole school down. There's, you know, I've had a lot of parent calls talking about how the, their student is, you know, suffering grade-wise and socially as well. I agree with Julie. Give it a shot, our, our staff is doing a great job and I think we need to put our, like she said, our faith in the, in the administration and staff and, and get everybody back in school.
This is Jen, I'll jump in and just say, I want to be very clear and let everybody know, I want kids back in school. But I want to do it if we can keep them safe. Last week in our meeting, I mentioned that my number, I, I put out my number, right? The fourteen day average. I was hoping that we could, we could come off the eight percent that we had mentioned back in October and maybe come up to ten, ten or twelve even, I would entertain, entertain that conversation, working together as a board. I think that that number represents not only the fourteen, fourteen day average, but it's reflective on all the numbers that we look at. Absenteeism, daily rate, all of those things go into that. So whether that be putting together that percentage, saying, we're going to go by the fourteen day average or anything else for that matter, I think that we've been consistent in using that percentage, the fourteen day average, Polk County fourteen day average. And seems to me like we should stay consistent with that. My concerns with going full occupancy, I've said them before, but we can't social distance. And I've been out to various different events, basketball games, and people don't wear their masks, they don't wear them correctly, and I mean, even our, even our, even our athletes don't wear them correctly. So we know that people don't necessarily always follow those rules. So if we were to go back full occupancy and we're putting more people out there, more kids out there that can't socially distance and they don't properly wear their masks, I have concerns with that. I want to, I also want to be clear that I have complete faith in our administration and our staff. But I think that putting them in the situation of going back full occupancy puts a whole different, whole different strain on what they would have to take care of and what they would be faced with. So far, I think that hybrid is working. And I've had a lot of feedback from various different people that they agree that that's the case as well. And then the last thing I would say is really that our numbers have been going up. So I think we need to take, take that into consideration. Those may be flattening out, but I'm not ready to send everybody back full occupancy at this time.
This is Doug, I'll jump in after Jen. We have been successful, we've been very successful as a district. Our numbers of, in the schools bear that out, our numbers and the fact that we haven't had outbreaks in the schools that, that have been proven, the, the, the individuals in the schools who have gotten sick didn't get sick in our schools. We're doing a great job, we're being successful. And now we're looking to lower, we're preparing to lower our mitigation strategies. We're looking to lower our defense system on this by putting students in a tighter proximity to each other, which we have to get to. We have to get to that someday, we can't do this forever. We want our kids back in the schools. I look at that, knowing that we're going to put our kids back in the schools. And the last meeting at Point Blank Gas, can we, can we follow proper mitigation strategies on the buses? The answer was no, can we follow proper mitigation strategies at our lunch hour? The answer was no, not if we go full one hundred percent. We will be lowering or increasing our risk in the schools by doing that, which is a risk we have to learn to accept at some point. Is now that point in time? I'm not sure. I have a hard time putting a number, drawing a line in the sand and saying, if we cross that line, we shouldn't do this or we should do this. But the one thing that sticks out to me right now is we're hearing nationally, we're not through the Christmas Eve yet, we're going to see spiking yet. And we're seeing that, maybe not in our school, but we are seeing that in the counties right now. We're seeing the numbers going up. So I, I guess at this point, I'm not, I need to see that number level out. I can't tell you what the percentage should be, but I know it shouldn't be increasing when we decide to go back.
Doug, you mentioned the, the tighter proximity. I believe Karen, and Karen, you could interject with lunches. I had heard that potentially that we might go to an assigned seating system or are we already in that kind of a system so that at least at lunches, we would know close proximity and be able to do close contact, trace, et cetera?
Yeah, this is Karen, can you guys hear me okay? Yes, okay, yeah, so we are implementing a seating chart. It should be implemented fully by the end of this week at all three schools, which will help us be able to contact Trace better in our lunchrooms. Another point is we did order plexiglass barriers, so we do have enough plexiglass barriers for additional tables that we will need to put up if we do move forward to full occupancy. Like I mentioned in our previous meeting on January fourth, Cornell is set up and ready to go for full occupancy, but Woodside and the high school would need to put up additional tables, which is why we moved forward to purchase the plexiglass to make sure that we had that additional barrier as a mitigation factor. But I do think, you know, we will continue to spread students out, put that plexiglass in between them at the lunch hour and have that additional seating chart in place just to make sure that we can contact Trace and that students are sitting by, you know, the same person every day to kind of help that pass, you know, the spread of potentially the virus to be lower if we do have a seating chart. So yes, Julie, you are correct.
Thank you.
One, one little thing that I forgot to mention as well, and it kind of goes along with lunches, transportation sometimes is a really, really difficult one to figure out. I have been working with Durham to start thinking about what this may look like, just, you know, just in case. And so obviously, we're looking at adding routes if when possible and if possible. But Doug, I think you're right, it, it still is going to result in closer proximity. And I think there's quite a bit of that going on now, you know, in terms of whether it be in school or outside of school. People are congregating already. And so, but we're still working to try to figure out ways to have less students on a bus by increasing routing if possible, so we're still exploring that. I think it's doable. And so I'm working with Beatrice and Karen and Jennifer on trying to make sure that we figure that out as well, just to continue to try to find the best mitigation strategies if you guys decide you'd like to go back.
And Todd, this may, you, you might not have a number yet. When we talk a hundred percent, what does a hundred percent mean in terms of what percent is virtual versus truly onsite? Do we have an idea of what were choices made by parents and families?
According to our last virtual numbers, and I know principals have asked our parents again to recommit through the third quarter as we continue through this. But according to the last commitments that were made, approximately eighteen to twenty percent of our, of our students are committing to virtual. And so do the math on that, that means about eighty percent of our students would be attending, so the numbers are already going to be slightly lower. And that, those numbers may change with the new commitments because we're not quite done collecting all that information. But nonetheless, approximately somewhere in there. I do expect the number probably to go up in terms of people coming back to school, but nonetheless, that's where we ended.
And Jen, I know you mentioned, you know, the, the, the wearing of the mask and et cetera. And that was one of the other things that was kind of at the front of my mind that when, when we go to a hundred percent, it is almost like first day in the door when school starts, where you, where you're laying out those, you know, these are the procedures and this is what we all need to follow. You know, kind of going through, I kind of go through the, going through our source again, you know, about, you need to wear the mask, you need to do sanitize the desks, you know, washing your hands, et cetera. Just like we're starting all over again, so that the kids understand that it's going to be more important than ever for them to, to follow those guidelines when they're in our buildings. And for teachers to follow those guidelines as well, to make sure that desks are getting, you know, cleaned during passing periods and before other kids come into the room. You know, I, I know we had Naomi in her earlier and she shared with me that she, she has her own set of wipes that her mom sent her to school with. And the minute she gets in a classroom, she cleans her desks on her own. So, you know, I think just, just those basics that we're, we're going to have to re-emphasize with our, with our families to, to make sure that we're doing that. And again, and keeping kids, kids home when they are sick, so that, that we don't spread things around, so. I know this isn't, you know, all we want to be like everyone else, but we do know other schools have been, have been doing this for months, some since the very beginning of the year and, and have been successful. Have maybe had to shut down a grade level, maybe a building, et cetera. They, they've figured ways to pivot. You know, with, with, with bigger buildings than us and smaller buildings than us. Yes, we, we may transport more children on a daily basis, but I'm sure that, that they're transporting quite a few of their students as well. You know, I, I think it's, it, it's a hard, it's, it's, it's a hard choice, it's a hard choice either way we go, what we do. What we do, if we move forward, if we stay what we're doing. You know, none of us have the magic ball and the answer. And that's unfortunate at this time. I think all we can do is, is try to do our best for our families and our kids and our staff. I don't know that I have the magic answer on what that is right now either.
Okay, I'll chime in here. This is Roland. I guess I look at hospitalization. I look at ICUs. I look at people on vent machines. I have. Three high risk in my house, so I pay attention to that stuff pretty close. And then I also look at what our school is doing from an absentee rate. I don't put a lot of faith in the Polk County. I don't put a lot of faith in the. State. Numbers are just as good as they are reported. I use those as a trend analysis more than anything. I. I believe it's time to get our kids back into learning. The way they're supposed to be taught. I also have a lot of faith in Todd and the administrators. Who if we need to pull a plug on a grade, if we need to pull a plug on the buildings. And we have that ability. Todd has said all along, principals also, that we have the ability to pull that in a pretty. Pretty fast if we need to. Yeah, I'm not throwing safety out the door. I don't believe that. I think of all these kids as my kids. And I would not put them in harm way if I thought for a second. That, that their health was at risk. So. I believe it's time to get them back in the classroom. I guess that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
So Roland, just one clarification. If we close a building, we would still need the Department of Ed's approval to do that on a waiver. But we do have the rights to close classrooms down up to. A large percentage of those buildings if need be, if we want to think about it like going in with a scalpel or a laser light focus.
And we have that ability without getting permission, right? So, so fifth grade, we see a huge spike in. In, in cases, we can pull that without authority, correct?
That is correct.
Julie, I'll jump in here. Go ahead, Gary.
Okay. Sorry, Mike. This is, so this is Gary. I guess I've got. I've got a few thoughts. And some of it's based on. Well. Let me just start. So. I'll agree with a lot of what's said about the numbers that we have available. Do I think that they're great? Absolutely not. Are they what we have available? Unfortunately, yes. Do I think that we're testing enough people still? No. I mean, the fact that we only have one state-run test Iowa site in Polk County, the largest county in the state. Is, in my opinion, pathetic. So then the question becomes how many people should be getting tested that aren't? So we don't have, have real good information on that. So while I'll agree that I'm not a huge fan of the 14-day positivity as a metric all unto itself. You know. As we showed before, when, when we asked for a waiver. You know, it does, it did at that point in time correlate to an increase in cases in the school. So with that said, do I think that, you know, we're spreading inside the school? No. But how much of that is because of the mitigation factors that we've been doing under hybrid? You know, along with that, you know, parents were asked to by last Thursday. To kind of say if they were going to stay in virtual or if they were going to go back to school. And so I guess my. Two questions with that is number one, how many kids are transitioning from virtual to go back to school? And how many of them made that decision based on last Monday's meeting where it, it seemed like we were going to stay the course. For at least another couple of weeks. And so if we make that change, do we need to go back to those, those families? And say you're going to go from virtual 100% at home to 100% at school? Is that what you signed up for? And if it's not, do we allow them the chance to transition back? You know, I don't necessarily like a, a hard, fast, you know, I don't. Let me say this. It, if we, if we put a number on going back. I think that that's the only time that we should look at that number. So if we decide that we're going to go back at 10 or 12%, then we're back. And then we pick something different to look at if we're going to transition again. And maybe that's percentage of positive cases per classroom, per building, whatever. So. I mean. To just kind of, kind of give it a bit of a balance. And then, you know, I know we've, we've been hearing. You know, that maybe the governor is going to. You know, try to take away the hybrid option or force our hand one way or another. You know, again, I don't think that's a great reason to do anything. But right, right before, before we logged in, you know, if we're talking about. Signing the waiver to go 100% virtual. I did see one of the things that, that they might push for is a waiver to go 100% online. And so I guess what I want to know is how many more people are, are planning on coming back. To school on Monday at the beginning of the second semester that we're all virtual. Do we need to, to think about that? And is kind of a waiver out there to go back 100% in person? For families that are comfortable with that, is that a middle ground that we need to consider? So those are my quick thoughts.
Absolutely. A couple of things. So Gary, we're still collecting data and following up with families. Principals, is there any data that you want to share at this time for your individual buildings? On the number of people that might be transitioning back, just preliminarily speaking, before we finalize all that data?
I can share some information because Alex worked his tail off today to try to get it set up. So we have, I believe. Currently, we have about 95 students who are virtual. We are planning second semester to have about 65 students virtual. So that would be 30 less, about 30 less students, all virtual.
30 more coming back to school.
That'd be great.
Kevin, can you, can you do me a favor? And I know I read. The letter and stuff that you sent out. Can you describe the language used? And if it included language around if we go back to full onsite. Language. And I just want to be clear with the board, make sure they understand what, what they said they were signing up for.
Yes, the intent was, so if you, if students choose to go all virtual. They could choose to come back into the building if we were full onsite. If they chose to go full onsite. We were not going to be setting up the option to go all virtual.
In other words, they understood that we may be going full onsite and this was their option. Is that correct? I'm sorry.
Yes, that was the intent.
Okay, sorry. I just, I didn't know if we lost you. Pat or Brian, is there anything you want to add to that? It sounds like at the high school, numbers are obviously decreasing in virtual, increasing in onsite. According to my.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, Brian, he said Pat. So. Sorry, Brian. As of, as of today, and there's still some phone calls that need to be going on, contacting my parents and families. We were right, we were right around 72 at the start of the year with 100% virtual. And right now we are sitting at. 41 as of today that want to do the 100% online. So yes, it is down. There's still some contacts that need to be made to other families that. Have not stuffed in that we believe or believe they don't. Want to be 100% online.
One of the other things that I'll throw out before Brian speaks up here. I know that we had several students that were in virtual that either were not attending and or not being successful in that mode. We did have some serious conversations with any of those families and students. Partly because we wanted them to be successful. So some of these numbers that are going down and returning are upon our request. Because we want kids to be successful. So I just wanted to throw that out just to let everybody know that again, the numbers did go down, but. A few of them or some of them are because we asked for them to return.
So how big a percentage is that, Todd, that we requested back? Because I was just coming to the conclusion. So we've got kids that want to come back. And go full-time from virtual. So they're willing to make that risk to come back from virtual to full-time. So what?
I have to go back and calculate it up, Roland, but I can go ahead and do that once we get everything confirmed. Like I said, we're still following up, you know, with families just to get a tight, tight number. But as soon as we do that, I can certainly give you those stats.
Do you think it's a big percentage or you don't know?
Kind of looks of it, 30 students. I would, off the top of my head, I would say we're probably about 35%. Maybe a little bit more are planning to return. If that's answering your question, I heard it right. Again, I'd have to go back and tighten those numbers up and really put the calculator on it though. Mr. Vaughn, is there anything you want to add before?
Yeah, I'll start with our data. Of 79 students that have been attending all virtual schooling in the first semester, 46 of our students. Have gotten back to us that they will remain in all virtual learning. 33 of those students have gotten back to us responding that they will return. In whatever in-person capacity we are in. So I have tried to communicate as clearly as possible. That could be returning in a hybrid or it could be returning in a full occupancy. But it's defined as in we are no longer wanting to stay in a virtual and return in whatever in-person model that is. With that said, I'll just give my, I'm going to put my two cents in here. I think that consistency is critical in our determination. And I'm going to advocate for, for our teachers right now. And, and a lot of our families. That even four days of just a quick four days into all virtual and then back to hybrid. Literally took a number of our families, even though they had been doing the hybrid version. All year long, those four days out sent a lot of confusion into families and it literally took us probably a good couple of weeks. To get everybody resituated back into the hybrid model that we had been doing for weeks. It also puts a lot of stress on our teachers. Our teachers are. Stressed as it is, but this week-to-week basis of waiting on. On what is the decision and are we going to go Thursday? Are we going to go Monday? That's actually probably stressing them as, as much as anything. And, and I just want to give that consideration that the week-to-week, we're not sure what we're going to do basis. Because we have to be ready to pivot adds a lot of undue stress. And so if we could have that conversation around. We think we'll table this for a couple of weeks may add to a little bit less of stress and anxiety on our teaching staff. I just. Think that consistency is the key. And, and what we're doing. Along with that, if we're considering going back. Into an all virtual. Or into, into a full occupancy with the idea that, well, we could just shut down some classrooms. Again, that is actually what am I, just the four days of going to all virtual. It sends a lot of confusion and more frustration to our families. Than to just make the decision to say, we're going to wait this out two more weeks in a, in a. In a hybrid, which we know we're having great success in, which our families are already locked into knowing we want to get back to full occupancy as soon as possible. I just, I want that to be given great consideration. Instead of taking the risk of saying that, well, we could shut down a classroom or we could shut down a grade level. Once you do that, it does send a lot of communicate, a lot of confusion. It takes a lot of communication to get people back on track. I'd just like to be more confident across the board that this is the right decision. This is the right time right now. So I'm just advocating for. What I, what I have witnessed and what I'm feeling from families and our staff. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share that.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Roland, to answer your question, and it's still not concrete, but between 11 and 12%, it said they wanted to go virtual.
Mike, I think you were going to chime in there when you and Gary kind of talked over each other maybe.
Yeah, I let Gary win that one. Next round's on me, Gary. A couple of things that I want to, I want to talk about here. First off, I want to thank every parent that reached out to me with their concerns, both on. On, on staying hybrid as well as those who reached out wanting to go back full-time in person. That really is the key to our success is when parents are engaged. So I really want everyone to know that I heard you. I listened to you. I understand. And definitely kept it in my thought process as I'm trying to get my thoughts together as well. I want to point out a few things here. As we're having a discussion right now of returning to full in-person learning, our current percentage, Todd, if I'm correct, is at 15.2% for Polk County positivity rate. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and the governor, the governor's office, the state of Iowa's recommendation. Is it a 15% you're able to apply for a waiver to go virtual, correct?
That was the line in which you drew in the sand and said you could not apply or would not approve unless you were at least 15%. That is correct.
All right, thank you. So as we are discussing this, as we've gone for quite some time now, having these discussions right now as a board, we're having a discussion about return to learn. With our percentage higher than 15%, where even the state where I feel has failed every school board in the state from wanting to step back from leadership. They even have put a line in the sand and put a number where their recommendations would be on that. One thing I would also like to point out as well, there are three things that have been put out. From the very highest levels of our health agencies to the local ones. Three of the top things that we can do to keep our staff and our children safe. Wearing masks, personal hygiene and social distancing. Those are the top three here at non-stop day in and day out. On the meeting on January 4th. Mr. Martin, you made a, a comment that I found very, very, very interesting when dealing with the food service. And that comment was. It would be nearly impossible to maintain social distancing as a mitigating factor. And so as we look at our numbers, how low they are, yes, we have done a great job and have great faith in our staff and the administrators. But again, we would be removing, as one of the other board members recently just said, one of those key pieces in keeping our staff safe. Julie, I'd like to touch as well onto your, onto your subject of the yo-yoing, the back and forth. And I've said this to almost every parent, I think that I've talked to as well. I am 100% against any yo-yo effect with our students going back to school. Mentally, it makes no sense for us to put the strain on families. And on the students to be able to try and go back and forth and plan. As well as creating an environment where they, where they learn appropriately. I do believe though that we can put some things in place as a board and a motion. And Julie, if you, if you would consider this, if you do have a motion ready to maybe add this amendment to it. To where we look at even a two-week window where the positivity rate has to be higher than our guidelines. I'd also like to point out on the last board meeting that we had that four of the board members annotated the 10 to 12% positivity rate that they would be comfortable with. I think by putting a number on, we don't have to be locked into it as far as as soon as that hits, we evacuate the buildings and we go virtual. If we can build in a little timeframe, a little window to see the numbers go up and go down, we have room to move on that as well. What it also does too, I believe, is it comes from our board, is that we are giving a clear and concise message to our staff. Probably those that are at most risk, that we do have a threshold. We figure it is not safe or it is safe. And we're being very clear on that. So I would consider or ask Julie, if you do have a motion that you would present. I feel you could get a lot more backing from the board with those measures in place on that. I'll end with this. I cannot wait for these kids to get back to school. Absolutely need to be there. Absolutely need to be there. I've dealt with the struggles alone in our own house here. I have one that's doing wonderful. I have another one that had to seek out medical advice on how to move forward because of the stress and the anxiety of everything going on. So when parents reach out and say, hey, here's what we're dealing with, believe me, we're feeling it in our own house and I completely understand and wanna do everything we can to get these kids back in school. In saying that, I would back completely any motion to the board that has percentages in place to make that message to to our staff and to our parents. The safety still is our number one priority. And that's all I have for that. Thank you.
Okay, so with with all that's been said, first off, I wanna go back to, I think, and focus on what Mr. Vaughn said first. Are we gonna be able to offer consistency to our teachers, knowing that they're probably who suffer the most when we do what we do? And that we say, oh, we're gonna wait a few days and then we're gonna decide. I've heard that firsthand from a high school teacher, how hard it is to plan lessons, not knowing what it is that's gonna happen tomorrow, let alone in two weeks when we finally make a decision. So you know, maybe that's the first thing we need to decide tonight, you know, is this is tonight the night to do this? I mean, I know we want, we want to back here then later. But if there's still that that feeling that we're going to continue to go upwards of the potential that, you know, what Mike said, as what the state put in to practice the the fifteen percent guidelines that we would. Right now, I don't see myself asking Todd to 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 ask for a waiver to go virtual. I don't think we need to go that far, given what we're seeing in our building. So I don't look for that to happen. At least from my perspective anyway, I don't think that there's any need to 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 push us in that direction, given given what we're doing in our in our district.
Julie, do you have a motion at this time for the board?
Um, I, the, I, I can't make a motion as as a president. I can only give advice and I had put one out there in my email to everyone on Friday that my suggestion would be that we bring kids back starting on Monday. With Cornell being the first, and then that next week we would follow with the high school and the middle school. And basically, I did not have a percentage in it and I was really concerned if when we were and and I guess Gary maybe said this best. When he said, if we set a ten to twelve range or whatever. What I was worried about is if I vote tonight and I say that and tomorrow, it is, it is below twelve. I'm sitting at eleven point eight. We vote, all right, so that means what day do we go? What day is the return happening? The day that we hit it? A week from that day? And then guess what? A week from that day, now we're back up to thirteen. That was my concern is then I've got a, I don't even know how to use that number. And that's why I was really advocating to to make a motion without a number in it. It wasn't that I think that number doesn't matter, but it's that how do we react to it and not have that yo-yo is in my mind. Other than the fact that we say at twelve percent, we're going back and we are in a hundred percent, no matter what goes forward. That, that, that's where I was having my trouble is how can I put a line in the sand, add a number and then know two days later, it may go back up and then then I'm pulling the plug again and that, that is, Mike, I understand that that importance of that number, but I I just don't know how to implement that number and make it work. And maybe I'm looking at it very narrow-mindedly on how how in my mind, how it it makes sense. But that, but that is, that, that was my struggle with it really, quite honestly. It was, what am I gonna do two days later after I've already voted to go back that now?
Julie, if I may add, just to get some, give some clarification on my thought process on this, because I completely understand the struggle that if we put a number on there, then we're locked in. But I think it been brought up by a board member in a previous meeting too, that you know, that we show a consistency where we're over that threshold. And my recommendation is that we throw a fourteen-day period and there are two-week period where we consistently, and I'm not coming with the exact words right now, but we have a a two-week window where we show continuing increase over that positivity rate. So if we were to lock in at twelve percent, for example, and five days later, we hit fourteen percent. But then the following Monday, we're down to eleven percent. We're not going back and forth, back and forth. We're giving some barrier time for us to react to what's going on in our communities. So I still believe that we can put a number on there that the board can agree with as well as not locking us in that we're doing a yo-yo effect.
I guess I'll reiterate, I'll, I'll say one other thing with the the number, I think, is and maybe Todd could pull it up so we can look at those again to see what have we really seen in since school started? And and really I want that, that the one where you're seeing the the weekly.
Trend data?
Yeah, the trend data, this one. So when we're looking at which column is your, your Polk County?
Polk County is right here.
Right here. So if we were to say even twelve. Right now, we need to get back to numbers that we saw in the first five to six weeks of school. That kind of what I'm looking at right now? I'm assuming that eight point five was our first week back, seven point two. Is that how it's playing out, Todd? Am I looking at it wrong?
Where are you looking? Oh, yeah, this is actually data that wasn't started to be collected until September eighteenth. So again, this is just the evolution of the data recording system from the state. Some of this data was available at that time and some was not.
So that that ten point four number would allow us if we went with a twelve. And what week was that, that ten point four?
That was October thirty.
And if I remember right, we had decided at that point to stay in hybrid when it was, that is exactly the week or the twenty-third, right before that is where we decided not to to pivot from anything different from hybrid. I think that was one of our very first votes when we analyzed our decision to start in hybrid. I think that's twenty-third right in there was was that. So from that timeframe, we have not dipped below that twelve. I, I, I wish we had data to see what, what, you know, what is, what did March and April? We all know that March and April last year, there was hardly anything and we weren't in our buildings. Will we be able to get there? You know, we got closer at Christmas at a twelve point two, a twelve point six. I'm, I'm afraid that if we do it at twelve, we might not get to a hundred percent.
And if I may, Julia, a couple of thoughts. And for those of you, I mean, you guys know me, I'm kind of a scientific person when I think about this kind of thing. It, it is about a body of evidence, a thought process here. And if you really think about what's actually happening with the absenteeism, and that becomes a really important piece of data. When we talk, and this is why, you know, when I was asked by several board members to take a look at that and dig in a little bit more. When we look at that two point nine, how many students and staff are we actually talking about? That actually were actually sick and could not do anything other than take care of themselves. And it's very, very small. And so what's happening there, and I know that the student number was a little bit further down in terms of participation. But it's not because they were so sick, they couldn't participate. A lot of times it was just they were disengaging as a result of their their quarantine. But nonetheless, of these students and of these staffers, there's five people out of forty-four people that are actually dealing with COVID. And that doesn't mean that they have, you know, symptoms at all. They could still be participating. And oftentimes they are, they're asymptomatic and they're still participating or they're still providing services as an adult. When we think about this number, that that tells us at fourteen point seven percent in the state and fifteen point two, a majority of the people are still functioning in their roles in our oftentimes a result of just coming into contact with somebody, whether it be in the family or the close contact protocols. And so, I mean, there's other things to think about beyond just that fourteen day, although that's where the state started. I do think the state will look at that. Again, we can't make our assumptions at this time. But I do think that's about to change as well. But again, we can't assume or make decisions at this time based on that.
I know tomorrow night, the the governor gives her state of the state. I know that that is in there for desire that you are either offering a virtual or you're offering a hundred percent onsite and I a gentleman, I'm not sure what part of the state he is from that was a hundred percent behind her as well. But I know the the teachers' union and ICA are against letting the state make the call. So to speak on on what we do in our building, but I, who knows what, what, what that, what that will look like. And I guess if that does happen, you know, I guess the writing's on the wall and and we go back a hundred percent, so.
Julie, I'll make a motion when when it's available.
Hey Todd, this is Chad. I've got a question. So if we were to go back full-time and someone had to miss school because they're quarantined as as far as a student goes, are they still gonna be able to attend the class via Zoom meeting while they're home being quarantined?
Yeah, we actually have quite a few students now that are home, either quarantining or have tested positive that are asymptomatic, that still attend classes, still conduct their work and still turn in their work, just as if they were virtual. The only thing keeping them from being onsite obviously is a positive test and or the fact that they have to wait out the quarantine to come back to school as a risk mitigation. Honestly, that does work pretty well and that wouldn't change at all. Would we see an increase in those numbers? Absolutely. That's probably likely. But again, high percentages of those people are still participating, still either teaching and or learning. And so again, I think when you really think about what absenteeism really means, it doesn't mean that they're not participating in the educational process. And that to me was a big evolution in my thinking. A few months back, you know, I would have probably still really reflected on that as a more of a negative, but you know, there, there are kids that are still learning. There are adults that are still teaching that are not at school for one reason or another that are asymptomatic. So, so yes, short answer.
Good, thanks.
This is Gary one more time. And Mike, I'm glad that you have have something that that you're ready to present. However, I don't I don't feel comfortable voting on anything tonight. I'm just gonna flat out say it. You know, we've got a, it sounds like almost thirty students per building looking to go back, starting on Monday. Whether that's they're going Monday, Tuesday or or Thursday, Friday, we're increasing the amount of students in each building. Our numbers are still at a level where, you know, a a number of us are not comfortable with. And I don't want to see us have to transition even classrooms or or grade levels because we we quote unquote, jumped the gun. You know, and you know, I guess it, I I brought it up. I didn't, I didn't hear Todd respond to it. What, what is the possibility? And maybe this is a question for for the principals. What's the possibility of sending out another, another waiver or request to parents requesting a hundred percent in-person? And how many people is that going to add? And then can we use that as another data point? And if that goes great, if if say the next two weeks go great with adding in those virtual students that want to transition back. If that goes great, at our next meeting, we have all of that data. Hopefully the numbers are trending down. I'm more than happy to to vote at that time. But right now with with kind of all of the differing viewpoints and everybody brings a great point. And yes, I want them back in school, but I want them to be safe. And I don't think that right now we can do both. So I I'm not sure that you know, I feel super confident voting on on anything that is presented. So I guess at this point, I would like to see us, you know, table it until our next meeting and or look at, you know, kind of introducing that that second waiver so that we are listening, that that parents who who want their kids back a hundred percent can have that option. Those that still want to stay in hybrid can. Those that want to do virtual can. We have the capability, I think, to offer all three modules for those at various comfort levels. Is that something that that we can do?
So Gary, you just wanna keep pushing this vote back until we start seeing our numbers drop? I guess I'm I'm confused a little bit. So, I mean, do we just keep our parents and our teachers and our administrators just to the point that we just wait for our numbers to drop to where we want them to be then? Is that?
Well, I'm saying
even with our attendance or absentee rate down at two point, don't quote me, two point nine percent?
Two point nine, yeah.
That's what you're saying?
I'm saying that right now, yes, right now with with our Polk County positivity rate at fifteen point two, where we were asking to go virtual just a couple of months ago. And now we're asking to go a hundred percent. Like, I I know that we're evolving our thinking around this, but that is a lot of whiplash to me. And so like, like we said, as far as the the yo-yo effect goes, I don't wanna bring everybody back. And then next week, we're talking about closing down three or four grade levels or an entire building.
Chad, I, I, did you have, did you have something you wanted to say?
You know, there's a couple of times it's been brought up that we were asking for a waiver at fifteen percent, but most of that was wasn't because we were fifteen percent, but it was because everybody thought there was gonna be a spike because of the Thanksgiving holiday, which never happened. So that was kind of twofold on that asking for a waiver there.
And I, I think our positivity rate at that time was actually quite a bit higher than what what we're sitting at right now.
If I remember correctly, just we we decided that we would apply and I think we were fourteen point three and increasing quickly if you're looking at the numbers. And if you remember correctly, we went from a one point six, you know, ones to a six point eight in one week in terms of numbers of people being out either due to infection and or quarantining. So that number was, yeah, it was double, more than double.
And is that when we pulled Cornell, put Cornell from hybrid to virtual for that week? Is that is that when that happened also? Was that right? Before the Thanksgiving break too?
I think that was when we took the middle school and the high school virtual.
That is correct.
Yeah, Cornell was a little, they were out for maybe two or three days and then we brought them back.
Roland, you can write this down. You and I are gonna agree on something here. And Gary, I completely agree with what you're saying as well. However, we made our last vote in October. I think our parents deserve us to move forward in some way with the vote on the return to learn. You know, I I got parents that are messaging me that are waiting to give their schedules to their boss if they're gonna be able to work or not, or if they're gonna be able to find childcare. You know, if we're not gonna move forward with the vote, we probably need to take a look at moving forward the next time we meet and discuss this. Mr. Vaughn hit it right on the spot, you know, with our staff, the the stress that they're going under just on transitioning this week by week, putting on people on eggshells isn't the appropriate way to go either. So again, Julie, when when the discussion is done, I will be ready to make a motion.
Does anyone else have a motion that that they wanted to present?
Yes, I would.
Yep, I was gonna say, so we'll have one. Yep, I was gonna say, so we'll have one present and vote and then the other present and vote. I don't know how this is going to work, given that they're probably going to be quite a bit different or both present and get a second and then discuss both. Is that the best way to do it? Okay. So Mike, if you want to go first and then we'll have Chad present his and you both need a second to have a discussion on it.
Perfect. Thank you, Julie. And if I could get Beth's help a little bit on this. For the motion to read the exact same as the motion that was approved in October with the change from 8% positivity to 12%. And also that we incorporate a two week window where the positivity rate has to exceed that limit in order for us to return to a hybrid or.
Beth, can you pull that? Do you have that?
I'm looking for it.
A minute here, Michael. She's going to pull that up. 23rd?
I think it was the 22nd.
26th?
So just so I understand a little bit about it as Beth is looking that up. So you would say as long as the positivity rate is below or at 12%. And the only way we would go to a hundred percent onsite. And the only option of changing from a hundred percent would be if sometime during a two week window, it exceeded the 12%.
To provide a little bit of clarification, Julie, it would have to have those 14 days over that percentage. So if we dropped underneath that those that 14 day would have to start over again. I would be looking at 14 days straight over that positivity.
I guess. Somebody can be able to monitor that accurately.
Motion, Mike, and see if that's what you're looking for here. Is that okay to you?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Read it and then we'll see if it makes sense here to supplant your 12% for the 8% here.
Motion to approve the following SEDAL CSD return to learn plan to return to full occupancy, learning beginning January 14 with a four day school week with no phased in return, dependent on guidance against that action from federal, state and local health authorities and the 14 day Polk County positivity rate is under 8.01%.
Get that, Mike?
I did. So we would be looking at changing that 8% to a 12%. And then also putting language in there as well for a two week window. You know, that would allow quite a bit of movement over 14 days. And those 14 days, it would have to consistently be over that 12% in order for us to return to any other learning model.
Mike, I want to tease this out just a little bit. So let's say on a Wednesday, any Wednesday, I don't care when, a Wednesday, it dips below to 11.9. What day would we start back? And then let's say it was a Monday, dipped low to 11.9. What day would we start back? I'm just trying to tease this out to make sure we set a good consistent thing.
Absolutely. Great question. And I think it's worth discussing. I don't know if that would necessarily be for the board as more it would be a recommendation from the administrator and the superintendents on when they could do that. But my recommendation would be as soon as they can make it happen.
Okay, thank you.
To expand on the return back to a different model from full occupancy, what if we said something similar to if the positivity rate exceeds 12% for 14 days, we would return to hybrid? Is that what you're kind of looking for, Mike?
I'm sorry, Jen, can you say that one more time?
If the positivity rate exceeds 12% for 14 days, we would, we would return to hybrid. And obviously we may need to play with those words a little bit.
No, I think that hits it right on. It would have to exceed the 12% for 14 days for us to change our learning model.
Can I, can I make a clarification? When you say exceeds for 14 straight days, are you talking about the average? Are you talking about, because it's it's a different number here?
Yeah, I think in the original, I think in the original motion, Todd, it was on the Polk County 14 day average, I think is how the original motion read. And so I would, I would like to stick with that. I'm not necessarily too concerned about the state as we are, just our local community.
Yep, that way we have some consistent metrics. Yep, that makes sense. All right, you want to read it one more time? Hang on a second. We're still typing here.
So I didn't quite hear Beth all of what she had read, but I think essentially what we're saying is if the Polk County 14 eight day average is less than 12%, we'll go to a full occupancy learning model. And if the positivity rate exceeds 12% for 14 days, would we, we would return to hybrid.
And we need to put something in there, I think with like what Doug brought up. When and how at administrator's discretion for dates?
I'd be perfectly fine with that, Julie.
Coming and vote on it, then it's going to be laid in stone that over that many days that they can, somebody has to make a choice to do something. So it needs to be in somebody's hands to make that choice other than ours.
I would completely agree with that, Julie, to add that as well.
Jen, can you repeat what you said just a minute ago so we can?
Yeah, let's all try. If the Polk County 14 day average is less than 12%, we'll return to a full occupancy learning model. And if the Polk County 14 day positivity rate exceeds 12% for 14 days, we would return to a hybrid learning model.
How long would we stay in that hybrid model till it drops below?
Are we back to the 14 days again?
I think we would stick to the same, you know, the same thought process. We'd have that 14 day window as well.
That's where again, is it 14 days we're in and as long as the next 14 days are below, we're, that's again where I have, I struggle with the percent.
I understand that you struggle with the percent, Julian. I think if you look at those numbers, I'm not sure. I mean, we kind of have had increase or decrease and I'm not sure. We may have to amend that at a later date. So we don't, didn't have a yo-yo effect, but.
Let me offer a slight tweak. Jen, I don't remember exactly how you stated it, but I'm just going to generically say if it increases, if it goes above 12% for 14 continuous days, the board will meet to reevaluate. Just an idea.
Doug, I think that's a great approach and it doesn't lock us in. We could always adjust our that percentage as well and reevaluate where we're at. So I would be fine with that amendment to the motion.
So we're trying to put a line in the sand for us to get back to 100%. And we're being cautious about yo-yoing to go up and down, up and down.
Can you say that again, Doug?
Yeah, I wish I could. So if it goes above 12% for 14 days, the board will meet to reevaluate going to a hybrid model. Which I don't know if we need to put that in there to make it law. Or if it's just an understood, that's what we would do.
I mean, we do meet every two weeks.
Yes, we do. This would at least give parents, students, something to look at to know this is the metric they're going to try to live by. And given the possibility that things are going to change, but once again, the possibility, and that's adding stress to the teachers. And students and parents. The possibility.
The other point of the percentage in there is that we may never reach that and we finish out the entire school year with a hybrid model.
And just like we did in October, we can always amend that motion if we find more information that we need to change it, just like we are today.
So I would, I would probably agree, Doug, that it's assumed that if we were going to make this adjustment, that we would either hold a special meeting. And or we would get back to the table here, the board table and approve that particular action. Could you read the motion one time, one more time for us, Beth, just to see if this meets everybody's expectation?
Motion to approve SEDAL CSD return to learn plan to return to full occupancy, learning with a four day school week with no phase in return. Dependent on guidance against that action from federal, state and local health authorities. If the Polk County 14 day average is below 12%, we would move to onsite learning. And if Polk County average exceeds 12%, we would return to hybrid learning model.
I think we said if it goes above the 12% for more than 14 days.
Yeah, that was the clarification I made earlier. Are we talking about 12% or average? Because they are different. 14 straight days of 12% and a, and a 14 day average are very different.
14 days above 12%.
So every day for 14 days, right? You're not the average of the 14 days.
I'd like to stick with the average. I like to keep the metric the same every time.
Well, it isn't. Sorry, say that again.
Go ahead.
I think what we went with the last time was if it goes below a certain percent. Is when we would go back to full occupancy. So I'm saying if we go above that percent. For, and so we'd be at 12, 12.1, 12.6, 13, whatever that is, if those numbers are above that.
Jenny, the original motion, 14 day positivity average is what the original motion read in October of the past. And I would recommend that we stick with that as we keep our basis for what data we're looking at.
So Mike, is this, I mean, I know we've, we've dismissed it with a couple of different interjections. So is it still your motion, Mike?
Yes, I'm completely comfortable with that being my motion.
Now, can we claim that this is just discussion and Mike is discussing about making a motion? And somebody else was also discussing about making a motion. Could we hear the second motion?
Nope, you can only have one motion on the table at a time. You can amend that motion upon approval of the person making the motion. Otherwise, you have to complete that action with a vote before you can move on to another motion, according to Robert's rule.
So Beth, could you read it one last time? And you might have to speak up a little bit. It's hard to hear you.
Motion to approve the following SEDAL CSD return to learn plan to return to full occupancy, learning with a four day school week with no phased in return. Dependent on guidance against that action from federal, state and local health authorities. If the Polk County 14 day average is below 12%, we would move to full onsite learning model. And if Polk County average exceeds 12%, we would return to hybrid learning model.
And just to clarify, Doug, the motion does need a second in order to be recognized by the board and for a vote. If the board, if it does not get a second, then it dies on the floor.
My other question is, so again, if if we go below 12, what day do we start? And we didn't, in the, in the old motion, there was a date in there, January 14.
Julie, I think we can just put some, some words in there as soon as the superintendent and administrators are able to, are able to make that action happen, you know, and we leave that in their operations hands. If they're able to do it in two days, great. If they need to wait a week, so be it. But I think we can leave that up to, up to their business on the logistics side of it.
And that we would certainly communicate with board on that as well.
So Julie, do you need anything else on that motion before we second?
Hang on a second. Beth's putting it all together yet here because I don't want to do a second before we know it and how it reads.
So we're adding, we're adding some words there about the, when we could go back.
All right, one more read through.
Motion to approve the following SEDAL CSD return to learn plan to return to full occupancy, learning with a four day school week with no phased in return, dependent on guidance against that action from federal, state and local health authorities. If the Polk County 14 day average is below 12%, we would move to full onsite learning model. And if Polk County average exceeds 12%, we would return to hybrid learning model upon superintendent and administration's recommendations.
You can put it in the recommendation window.
She's going to copy and paste that into simply into the, into the content area so you can read it for yourself if you need to. Give her a minute, then you'll have to refresh simply. She's got it there. Hang on a minute. She does have it there and simply if you want to read it.
This is Doug. So we have said, I think where we put upon superintendent and administration's recommendations. The way it could or could not be interpreted is that we would accept their recommendation for going back to hybrid. But we really want to accept their recommendation for how fast they can go to 100% onsite. That was my original question I was trying to tease out here.
If you inserted model upon superintendent administration's timeline recommendations, would that suffice? Add the word timeline between recommendations and recommendations?
I thought that was the intent. Yes.
We'll add that and I'll refresh. So we've added that word timeline in there, Doug?
Has it been changed on screen? I don't see the difference. Sorry.
Administration's timeline recommendations. You do not see that?
So what I'm reading on screen is that we would go to, you're giving us a timeline recommendation only for returning to hybrid model. I'm asking for a timeline recommendation for how fast you can go to full onsite.
We go to?
Oh, I got you.
Full onsite. As soon as.
That's what, that's what I want to give to you, Todd, is to say it hits below 12%. Now, how fast can the school react? The board isn't going to set it. I want the superintendent to set how fast can the school react? To go full onsite, once this is met.
Not where that would work.
And maybe it's full occupancy learning.
It's probably for both. Could we add some words? Return to full occupancy or return to a hybrid learning model period then with guidance, with guidance from superintendent.
Because it says with no phased in return. I don't, what does with no phased in return mean?
It means all schools would go back at the same time.
Dependent, and it probably needs it right there. As soon as administration.
You could put upon superintendent administration's timeline recommendations.
Yeah, I think it would have to be right there.
Yep. Yep, after return, copy paste upon superintendent administration timeline recommendations. Take a look at that. Beth's going to go ahead and correct the grammar there on period.
It still doesn't quite do what I'm thinking it should do. And, and maybe I'm being nitpicky, but I'm just trying to dot the i's, cross the t's. I understand how you've written it. I can be, I can be satisfied with that.
I mean, I, I think we all get the gist of it, that if we're below 12% for a 14 day average. As soon as administration deems it possible is when we will go to 100% and vice versa for going back to hybrid.
Right, I think it needs to be repeated for the second part too. For going back to hybrid, right?
Oh, you took it away from the bottom part, didn't you? Okay. Well, the first is the return. Yeah, yep, yep. So copy it and paste it instead of, she cut it and pasted it, sorry. So now she's got it in both spots.
So the intent, the, the intent of the verbiage is that. If the Polk County 14 day average is below 12%, we would move to full onsite learning model. Upon superintendent administration's timeline recommendations. And if Polk County average exceeds 12%, we would return to hybrid learning model upon superintendent and administration's timeline recommendation.
Doug, that's how I understand the motion and I agree with it.
Okay. That is how I interpret what we've written.
That's the way I interpret it as well, and I'll second the motion.
14 day average is based on.
Whatever it says that day.
But for how many days? I mean.
That's the average. And just so that I'm understanding, you guys' intent here is to continue to utilize the metric. At the Polk County 14 day average for this particular threshold. We all.
That was my intent behind the mo, Todd, that was my intent that we keep the same data points as, as Doug pointed out, that we keep that same data preference when we're, when we're utilizing it.
Sorry to belabor it, I just want to be clear here.
But do we, do we have a window? I mean, because that, this is again where I go back to my struggle. Is, so I look at today and the 14 day average is, what is it today?
15.2.
What was it yesterday?
15.1.
What was it four weeks ago? You know, that, that, that again is where my struggle comes with that whole average. You know, if I say 12 and it goes to 11.9 tomorrow, all right, we're go. As soon as Todd says we go. What happens when it comes back up? That, that's when I'm like, how quick do we react? I mean.
It has to be over that for 14 days.
That doesn't say that. It's not 14 days, it's a 14, the average, and the average is that daily number, right?
So, so, and Julie, maybe let me help, see if I can understand what you're asking here. And I think this is where maybe Julie's maybe thinking. So if the number is at 15%, how many days of way below 12%? Does it have to be to drop the average to 12%? It has to drop significantly below for more than 14 days. To get that number to drop to an average below 12%? Am I, am I articulating that?
Yes, that, that's where I'm getting at.
Simply hitting a 12%.
Yeah, and I have to look at a 14 day window of what they just looked like for the last 14 days.
If I'm misrepresenting.
That's what Jen, you're getting to is it's over that 14 day window, not what the day says today. That's when I'm like, who's going to keep track of that?
Well, Polk County keeps track of it. The state of Iowa keeps track of it. We see it every single day, what that number is.
15.9, right? So that's the last 14 day window, right? Okay.
No. That was today's. That's today's.
Okay, well, tomorrow, what if it's at 10? I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, so if tomorrow it's 10, we would say, we'd be.
Let's go.
Yeah.
And then on Thursday, what if it jumps back to 15?
Then it has to be above 12. That number has to stay that way for 14 days above 12.
Okay, if I get up into 20 and whatever. I mean, it has to stay above 12 for 14 days in a row for us to consider going back to hybrid.
We always have the ability to meet and change our minds.
Correct.
I understand. Just doing the, you know, I'm just, just getting, making sure I understand where, what that number is. And so vice versa is the other way. If we're below. So before we can actually go is that we have to have a 14 day period. Where it stays.
That's the way the motion says. I don't think that's the way the motion reads. I think it says if we go below 12, we'll go back. But we won't pivot again unless we have a rate that goes above 14 or above 12 for 14 days.
Julie, if I hear you quickly, we have the same intent. So we, you know, if it goes to 11% tomorrow, we're back at school. In two days, it goes to, to 16%. We're still going to be at school. It's going to have to show that 14 days continuously where we exceed that 12% threshold. So I think that allows us some lenience and we, we skip that yo-yo effect.
I don't think the motion reflects that right now.
And it was seconded.
Yeah, it was, yeah, so we, we have to. Pick out with what it says.
And I guess. Well. The intent was to have the 14 days in there. Not necessarily.
Yeah, it says a 14 day average.
Yeah, not 14 day average, but if it exceeds it for 14 days.
I'd even go so far as to say the 14 day average must exceed it for 14 days.
Agree.
I wonder if we're over complicating this by a long shot here. We, we currently have metrics that we are, have been using. And I'm wondering how complicated it's going to be to try to make a decision around. Either different metrics or two layers of metrics. Which is different than using a body of evidence still. And I'm just curious, I want to make sure I understand your intent fully. It's hard to administer if I don't fully understand what, what you're trying to accomplish here. Either the 14 day average, which is what we've been using. And Mike, if I heard you, that was your intent, maybe not. If I misunderstood that, please say so. And I'm not sure where the 14 days concurrently came in, but I don't think we've ever used anything like that metric. Just the 14 day average as posted by Polk County.
So again, again, Julie and Todd and for the entire board, it may not be the exact wording. That we're looking for. We've been trying to wordsmith for a while now. The intent is for us to increase from eight to 12% as our threshold. And to relieve that yo-yo effect, to have a 14 day window that if we exceed that 12% threshold, we're not just jumping these kids right back to school. We're giving some lenience for it to go up and down a little bit and for us to, to maintain that same learning model.
What if we just set the line in the sand where we want to go back to full occupancy? And not address the other.
That's a valid point because if we do that, it's going to be two, unless we call a special meeting, it'll be two weeks before we would meet again.
Doug, I would be fine with that as well. We could put this to a vote. And have it not, not pass and we come in with a, with another motion as well with that, if I'm correct.
Or we could amend it, can't we?
Oh goodness, I have to go back to proper pool. Todd sent them to me.
I think you could amend it. It might be cleaner for intent purposes, looking back to just take a vote and then come back.
I can vote it down and then redo it. But Chad has a vote, has a motion as well, so we need to take his second.
All right, so it's been seconded, so are we opening? Okay, so everybody, if you would refresh, that just made a couple of things to correct things. If you would look at number eight, return to learn update. And you said A or? And go to A, return to learn number one. And then she'll go ahead and open up the voting.
So is in the intent that we are voting this down and coming back with a different motion?
I think, I think that's what we said, if, if we don't like how this reads.
Who are we now?
Roland, Mike and Chad are who we're waiting on. Yeah, you might have to refresh Simly and come back in.
Yep, make sure you're logged in.
It's been a while.
I didn't log in and stated refreshed, but it was not.
Hasn't come up yet. Did you click on the, the screen sometimes after I click on the screen, then it all?
I already voted mine. But then you don't, you don't have it.
No.
Mark me down as a no.
I can put yours in chat.
Mike, we're waiting on you. Did you get a chance to refresh?
Okay, so the motion failed 5-2. So Chad, you had a motion, you won, I believe.
Yep, okay, I'm going to read it here. All right, I'll make a motion to approve full occupancy along with the continued virtual parental option. And a four day school week with extended school hours for Cornell Elementary School, January 18, 2021. Woodside Middle School, January 25th, 2021. And SADL High School, January 25th, 2021.
And I'll second it. This is Roland.
Beth is working on getting it in so you can see it. Is that number, is that going to be number two? It'll be under return to learn number two.
Don't forget to refresh so you can see the image. Has it been seconded?
Chad made the motion. Does that read the way you said it? Chad?
Yes, that's correct.
Any, any discussion?
Chad, can you kind of walk me through into the rest of the board to your thought process on that staggered return to learn? Just so I can kind of get an idea of what your position is.
Well, last week, Mr. Vaughn asked us. Just to wait until the 18th to put Cornell back into school. just to wait until the eighteenth to put Cornell back into school. And I guess this just gives a little bit of time for people to make their adjustments and and do what they need to do. It's at least a full week for everybody.
And I'd say lesson planning at the high school, I think too, that gives them a little, a little bit more time.
And Chad, would you entertain any adjustment to this motion that would include a number that would give some guidance to parents, to the staff of a level of positivity rate or absenteeism? That you would return back to a hybrid or virtual model?
I don't really want to put a number to it. I'd rather just keep it up to a board decision based off of a recommendation by Todd and the administration.
Are there any other? I'm going to have Beth go ahead and post the vote. Motion fails four three. I think we're at an impasse. And you know, it's nine o'clock already, so I don't think we're getting anywhere very fast. And we have a long agenda yet to go. So are we doing the point that we table it for tonight and put it on our meeting for two weeks out?
Julie, I think we still had one more motion that was going to be presented per the discussion on the first motion.
Okay. Go ahead and throw that one out.
Doug, if I can carry it over to you, as far as what your thought was, I would appreciate your thoughts on that, on that motion.
Give me a second. Verbiage would be something similar to, to approve the following Sado CSC return to learn plan. Sorry, return to, to return to full occupancy, learning with a four day school week with no phased in return upon superintendent administration's timeline recommendation. Depending on guidance against the action that I assume from federal, state and local health authorities. If the Polk County fourteen day average is below twelve percent, we would move to full onsite learning model upon superintendent administration's timeline recommendation. Beth, that was written, that was read from return to learn number one with just a little bit cut out.
Let her, let her get it copied and pasted and then tell her what you cut.
Yep. Can I say things like first sentence unchanged, second sentence unchanged?
Doug, you could type it into the chat.
Not in the Zoom meeting today.
There's really only a little piece of it that I cut out.
Alright, go ahead Doug.
The piece that I would remove. So this, this part is kept. Look for the sentence that starts with, if the Polk County fourteen day average is below twelve percent, we would move to full onsite learning model. Take out the following. And if Polk County average exceeds twelve percent, we would return to hybrid learning model. Just take that part out. I'm going to extract one more piece out of there too. Sorry. So let me know when you're ready.
He's ready.
Okay. Moving back up earlier in the motion. I'm going to start with the middle of the sentence where it says four day school week with no phased in return. Remove the comma upon superintendent and administration's timeline recommendation, comma. There's no need to have that in there twice. We have it once at the end where we really intended it to be, where I intended it to be. Mike, did that make sense as I extracted stuff out of there?
Yes, sir, it did. Thank you.
Alright Doug, take a look here and see if this is what you were intending.
Okay, I'm looking at my end from return to learn three.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes. Mike, I wordsmithed it. Do you want to read it?
Doug, is the way that you see it, the way that it's presented on the screen right now? Doug, you were muted there, sir.
Sorry mute button. That was how I intended to read, word for word, no changes. Hopefully that's is your intention on how it should be interpreted.
I don't see any issue with the way it's worded in saying that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following Sado Community School District return to learn plan to return to full occupancy, learning with a four day school week with no phased in return. Depending on guidance against that action from federal, state and local health authorities. If the Polk County fourteen day average is below twelve percent, we would move to full onsite learning model upon superintendent administrator's timeline recommendation.
I will second that motion. This is Doug.
So if I'm reading this right, if our absenteeism is at zero percent, we can't go back to full time if the Polk County fourteen day average rate is not at twelve percent or below. Is that correct? That's the way that reads, right?
Correct.
So there's really no sense, if this passes, there's no sense in Todd wasting his time keeping track of our absentee rate anymore then, correct?
We could come back with a different motion in another meeting.
But you know, this is, this is where it makes it hard on a school board member because with every part of my being, I want our children in this building, but I don't want to vote for this. That's what is hard for us. I'm just going to be honest and that's, I've been in this situation twice now. You know, the first time when we put the comeback at eight percent on the fourteenth of January. Now do I vote no? To be stubborn and because I need a percent in there? Or do I vote yes? Because well, if I get to twelve, I get to have the kids back in school. This is where it makes it hard on a board member. There's no right answer right now for me. I'm just being honest.
Julie, I understand where you're coming from and to speak with what Roland said, as board member Roland, you have the option to make motions as we all do. And to make amendments as well. And we also really have that option to vote. That's where our voice gets heard as a smart little democracy that we are as a board. It's all opinions, it's all our own thought processes and all of us are equal on this. And we all share the same burden that you're feeling as well.
I understand that, but I just want, I just want our people who have been listening here for two and a half hours as we debated this topic to understand that, that I don't win here, either way I vote. And so at the end of the day, and I hope you all know this, that is, as we walk away from this, that all seven of us support whatever it is that comes on the table tonight. One way or the other, no one says a word against it, one way or the other. You are a hundred percent behind whatever the vote is. I mean, that's the other thing. We all have to be in unison and that again is, when I said, do we, do we let this go another two weeks and table it if we can't be in unison on it? I don't, I don't, I don't know, anyway.
Do we have? Julie, do we have a meeting on the books? I thought something came through today for a week from today.
Do, but I don't know if we're any farther down the path a week from today.
For me, I'm two weeks out from, from New Year's. And that for me was, was a point of of knowing where we were. And I stated that upfront.
I just want you to know, if tonight, if I vote no for this amendment, it's not because I don't want your kids back. I just don't like the language that is put forth. I'm just going to be honest with that. So just, just so you know. Okay, she's gonna. Motion carries four three. Alright. We will move on. We're going to take a break first. Ten minutes and we'll be back. Doug requested that via text a little minute ago. I could use that. I've got a migraine and trying to deal with that and all of this. We'll be back in ten minutes. How does that sound? Thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
It's nine oh nine, I'm going to pause the recording.
No, I'm just kidding.
It's nine nineteen, so you can get started whenever you're ready.
Okay, um. Alright. We will go ahead and pick up with administrative report to the board on standard reference grading. If Mary is still hanging in there with us.
Of course I am. Hey, everybody. Todd just asked me to give you all a little update and I promise it will be short, I promise. You know, when we made the decision this year to not implement standard reference grading, it was a difficult decision to make because most of you remember that we've been, you know, we've spent years on this work. If you remember me, you know, going back to when we implemented the idea of tiering our learning targets and all that stuff. So this has been many, many years in the making. And quite honestly, when March twenty twenty rolled around, we were in a really great place. We had given teachers. We had developed and created lots of professional learning for teachers. They had been given that learning and we felt like we were in a really good spot. And so we feel that a lot of things have worked out so that we're ready to roll that out for next year. And so there are a few things that we do need to ensure are taking place for that. And I just have listed those here. Recently, I created a secondary teaching and learning task force to discuss a variety of topics involving teaching and learning. And we are meeting this Wednesday. And I've asked the members of that task force to come prepared, having spoken with their colleagues around the rest of the things kind of on this list. You know, how much time do teachers feel like they need to prepare? What are those professional learning topics that, that we need to give some refreshers on? All those things. So I'm very excited to hear what our teachers have to say this Wednesday. We do have a number of teachers at Woodside High School who are piloting the Power School version of the SRG handbook for semester two. So Chris Dameron and I are going to be meeting with them soon to go over that. I think they will become instrumental in this process as we move forward. Those teachers will be keeping the SRG grade book, but also reporting out to parents using the traditional grade book. And more information will be sent out around that when we get closer to rolling out that grade book. Again, I've talked a lot about PD already in my one minute or two minutes here. We're really going to take the input from staff on what they need and ensure that we have that time. And so you know, one thing I think that could, will work to our advantage while we have it are those Wednesdays. And so I'm very excited about that. And then kind of the last couple of steps in the process are doing more outreach to families. And so the SRG policies and procedures, we, I went over with the board last year. I have shared the most recent, the finalized document of that. A lot of the questions, a lot of the things that the board asked have been put into those policies and procedures. Some in the Q and A section, some in other sections. And then we are meeting this week with the admin, secondary admin to talk about doing a virtual information night. We had a great, we had great ideas for an in-person night last spring that never happened. It was going to be great. And we are just going to provide that information to students and families digitally so that everybody will have access when it is convenient for them to access it. That will include some videos, it will include some screen casts and things like that. So we are really trying to provide lots and lots of information for everyone to look at so that they have time to ask questions and feel comfortable. So I feel great moving forward. And I'm excited to, to take this next step. So that would be the end of what I wanted to say. And I will take any questions or thoughts if you have them.
Thank you for reaching out to the teachers to find what they need. You might, I guess you're finding they need different things than they ever needed before at this point.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, but at the same time, there, there are a lot of things that, you know, one of our first conversations with this task force actually was, you know, what are some things that we're learning in this pandemic that, that we want to keep thinking about moving forward? So it's, you know, they really are the experts and they're the boots on the ground people. So they're always the people that I go to to plan and prepare for things. Seeing no other questions, I promise I'd be short. That was like five minutes. That might be my shortest one in a while. I just want to thank the board. You guys are amazing and I just really appreciate you guys every single day. So I had the mic, so I wanted to say that right now and I'll mute myself. Thank you guys so much.
Thanks, Mary, for putting that together and doing that, that hard work. I know we, we had hoped to already have that going on this year and had a few cakes thrown in our, in our way. So appreciate you for, for not letting that go by the wayside and making sure we are still focused on, on getting to that SRG program. Alright, now I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Mike. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chad, I'll second.
Discussion. I had bills and other than I think we're keeping Excel mechanical in business, everything looked good. Nice to see we've got a place for prom, fingers crossed. And lots of really nice donations there at Christmas time for families. I love to see that number of how many we were able to help. Beth probably has. So ready to go? Motion carries seven zero. Now I need a motion to accept person. Motion carries seven zero. Now I need a motion to accept personnel changes.
A motion to accept resignations and employment agreements as listed below in the minutes or in the agenda?
This is Michael second.
Discussion. Straightforward.
Nothing here shattering here.
Beth's got the bullet for us. We have motion carries at least seven, or sorry, six, zero with one abstain. Can I get a motion to approve open enrollment closed programs for 2021, 2022?
This is Jen. I'll make a motion to approve excluding the following group from open enrollment approval for school year 21, 22, because the program is full, K-12, special ed, level one, two, and three.
Chad, I'll second.
Discussion. Pretty straightforward. We've got all we can handle right now in those programs. Motion carries seven zero. I need a motion to approve open enrollment in and out.
Just Chad, I'll make a motion to approve open enrollment in and out.
This is Jen. I'll second.
Discussion.
Continuations for.
I think we're missing you, Jen.
Thought it went. Did you get it? I, it's a yes if you don't.
This came through. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, now I'll move on to vendor contracts. So I need a motion to approve. Now can we do all? One, two, three.
This is Chad. I'll make a motion to approve the following resolution. The board hereby accepts the 2020 classroom MEP renovations project as being fully complete and establishes the date of acceptance of its completion.
This is Roland. I'll second.
Discussion.
This is just more of a general point. All of these have obviously been vetted through the Ops Committee. And so we did get a chance to, to visit about every single one of these topics. This is a pretty straightforward agenda item for us to make.
Is yours coming through, Jen?
Must be a little slow. Did it come? The yes.
Got it. Motion carries seven zero. Motion to approve pay application number five for Edge Commercial. Get a motion, I should say.
This is Roland. I'll make a motion to approve pay application number five from Edge Commercial for the 2020 classroom and MEP renovations project at the cost of $25,013.48.
Chad, I'll second.
Discussion.
This is Patricia. Just, this is the remaining amount other than the retainage. The retainage we have to hold for another 30 days after the final completion date so that you'll see that in February. So this is the remaining amount other than the retainage.
Motion carries seven zero. Now I need a motion to approve pay application number five from For Sure Roofing.
Chad, I'll make a motion to approve pay application number five from For Sure Roofing for the 2020 High School South Jim Re Roof Project at a cost of $21,423.79.
This is Roland. I'll second.
Discussion. That is the final. Do we still have the retainage on this?
So this one, we already approved the final completion back in December. So this is the payout of the retainage amount.
All right, that's what I thought. I wasn't, I didn't know if you heard me or not, Patricia. I said that kind of, kind of quietly. Thank you. Okay, yeah, I'm in. Okay, motion carries seven zero. All right. Now I need a motion to approve the plan specifications, et cetera, for the 2021 district-wide additions and renovations.
This Chad, I'll make a motion to approve the plan specifications, form of contract and estimated total cost of construction for the Sadeel Community School District 2021 District Wide Additions and Renovations Project.
This is Michael second.
This is Roland. I'll second.
All right. And discussion.
So this, the board took action to tentatively approve these items back in November when they were released. This is just the final motion to say that yes, that is the project parameters before we go to approve any contracts.
Looks like Roland. I'm waiting on you. All right, motion carries seven zero. Okay, so now it looks like we're going to have a discussion or are we going to do a summary?
Yeah, we'll probably go ahead and have a survey session before we start approving.
Okay, so first of all, we're going to discuss the 2021 district-wide additions and renovations in summary. So I'm thinking to Hala for hanging on through all our meeting here and I'll let you guys kind of take over or Todd, whoever wants to run with this.
So the first thing that we wanted to do here is, is thank everybody for hanging out with us and for the marathon meeting here tonight. So we appreciate Hala, Estes. And so again, we've got a number of things that we want to talk about prior to navigating through our 22 low bids that we need to get approved tonight. And so as we get going in those, those will go much faster, but we want to really have a predicate conversation around the overall budget and, and the recommendations that we're going to make with that. For those of you that have not met, we have Hala representatives here, Eric Vermeer, and I know that you're online as well. And we believe this is going to be your last exchange with the board. So again, we wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to address the board and we appreciate everything you've done for us as Eric fills your shoes and takes over the projects here. We also have Ryan. Ryan Haley here is here today just to kind of make those recommendations for the low bids and kind of review that just for a brief amount of time. We're not going to have him go through the lengthy one that he went through with us in the actual Ops Committee meeting. So real quick here, Hala or Estes, I'll let you guys go ahead and kick it off here and we'll move forward with you know, the project master budgets and move forward with the projects here.
Well, thank you, Todd. And again, this is Eric Vermeer with Hala Architecture and pleasure to be with you tonight and report that we're, we have a lot of positive contractors on board, a lot of positive bids. We, if we look at the, the master budget slide, a second Patricia, our, our total of our bids, if we look down at the kind of the bottom line, we'll skip to that right away. The conglomerate total was about 1.97% over budget for about 383,000 against our 22.9 million. And that is using our, our bid numbers as well as some numbers that we know from soft costs and some numbers that we don't yet know. Furniture costs, for example, are still being finalized and, and testing costs, some things like that. So the number that we think we're at right now or close to is about $300,000 over. Now, it should be noted that the high end of the window of costs and our cost opinion that, that was provided was over the 22.9 mark. And so we did figure in several deduct alternates. And, but come, coming to you tonight, we're making the recommendation that we do not take any of those deduct alternates. Because the amount that we're getting for a deduct price on those alternates is, is, is kind of low. And in fact, I call it, kind of call it, you're getting, you'd be getting those items on sale by keeping them in the project. We did not realize, I think, the, the total amount of deducts that we would have expected. Therefore, we recommend that the, the as-bid amounts be accepted. And then therefore the, none of the deduct alternates, you know, be taken. So bottom line is, we're about 300,000, over 383,000 over against the 22.9 as we see things today. But our recommendation is to move forward with the, with the project as bid.
And so Eric, I'm going to chime in here if that's all right. I apologize if I'm interfering with your flow.
No.
Keep in mind, board, that, you know, we recognize that the market right now is not favorable in terms of trying to make sure we got every single thing we wanted in this large scope setup projects. Nonetheless, as we went through the Ops Committee and Ops Committee members, if you would chime in, I'd greatly appreciate it. You know, we discussed whether we go ahead and start looking at some of those alternatives to start removing them. And I think Eric did a really nice job just outlining why that does not make sense. If you're going to continue to, in the future, to go do that work, you could not do it for the costs in which the deducts would give us that benefit, that relief. And so it made sense to hold on to those. The other thing is, is that as you think about the future, the, the projects that we would pull out only go up in cost as we think about doing them in the future. Our HVAC systems, our controls, those things don't get any cheaper as we start thinking about them in the future. If we start pulling them out now. It's as cheap as it's going to get right now. We're going to do that stuff. And so really what we're saying is, is hey, we have some of the available funds that we want to go ahead and pay for some of those projects that we would do next year or the year after that anyway. And again, we're confident in terms of our budget. We're confident that we have a couple of dollars saved dollars for those types of, of projects and those overages. So I just wanted to throw that in. Committee members, is there anything you wanted to add to that? I know we had a long discussion over that in the committee meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I had a science teacher, actually, I went to say now that always said one and done. So, well, I mean, with the economies of scale and everything being torn apart, that's going to be torn apart in the last two years. In the next two years, excuse me, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put those projects on hold and wait, you know, to tear stuff apart later. So not only from an economical standpoint, but also from a educational standpoint for our kids. You know, we're not going to be, this way won't be interrupting classrooms a second time or whatever. To me, it makes sense to get all this stuff done in one shot versus waiting. We have the funds. To me, it doesn't make sense to wait. Let's get it done and be over with and educate our kids.
And if it's not going to impede on any other project that, that we needed to get done or the ability to, to do the daily work that we need to do in, in the, in the district at all by, by earmarking that, that overage as part of just what we do in a, in a normal summer. I always go back to what Doug said and, and kind of why we wanted and needed the bond in the first place was that, that startup cost and the putting the dumpster out there every year and et cetera, and et cetera. You know, get everything done in, in bulk is, is a much cheaper way for us to go. So I think at the end of the day, that was kind of our thoughts on that.
All right, Eric, is there any other comments you wanted to make before we continue to move on?
No, thank you. You know, that was really the, the main thing. We will go through each individual bid package now. And I just wanted to point out that those bid packages all toll up to the 17.9 number in that master budget. And then it's the soft costs that add on to that to get to the grand total of the, the 23, or just over 23 million. So these costs that you will see as part of these bid packages, they all toll up to that 17.989 million that you see in the master budget.
Thank you, Eric. Couple other documents, and we're not going to go through every single one of these. You have seen some of these documents in some of the up weekly updates, Ops Committee, you've seen them. This is basically the bid tabulation sheet. And again, we're not going to go through this line for line as all of the low bids, the winners will go ahead and take action upon tonight. But I just wanted to point it out because it is available to you to, to go in a little deeper if you so choose as we go through this or at the conclusion of this. The other document that I just want to take a quick look at here, and we don't have to go through this in great detail. This was put together by Estes Construction as our formal doc and recommendations for all the bids in which we are about to navigate through. This was put together by Ryan Haley. And we appreciate all the work that Ryan has done. Ryan, I don't expect you to go through all this, but is there any general comments you want to make about what we're about to approve in the 22 packages?
Yeah, Todd, we went, you and Patricia sat in with a, with a group of us as we went through pre-award interviews with each of these contractors and even a couple of them that didn't make this list. I think the biggest thing to, to take out of this is we feel very comfortable with the group that we, that we got for bids on this, on these projects and look forward to working with each and every one of them and look forward to moving forward on the project with you guys.
Thank you, Ryan. I will say going through the process, I was very impressed with the granular level details in which we discussed with each of the contractors in such a granular way that I felt confident that this would go much, much smoother after these particular conversations. So I very much appreciated the conversations and Ryan and Nate, you guys did a fantastic job navigating through those with those, those contractors in those pre-bid award meetings. The other thing that, before we go ahead and start with our, our first bid package here with Elder, I just wanted to thank Art again. And Art, thank you so much for attending tonight, again, our marathon meeting. And I wanted to give you an opportunity just to say a few words to the board. You've done a great job for us and we certainly will miss you, but certainly are, are glad and really proud of the fact that you're, you're moving on and trying new experiences. But I just wanted to give you an opportunity to address the board.
I think you're, you're muted, Art.
You're on mute.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you. I appreciate the kind words. And for those of you that hadn't heard, I, I'm moving on to a new career. On the, the 22nd will be my last day with Hala. And so this will be my last board meeting at Sadeel. I went back through my calendar and counted them up. And I think I've attended between 40 and 60 board meetings over the last 10 years at, at Sadeel. So I will definitely miss all of you. I will even miss the, the two-hour marathon meetings. Those, those long meetings that give me context for really what it is that all of you do and the, the real mission of the school district and to serve the students. And to that end, I've, I've worked very hard to to make sure that the architecture and the buildings and the designs, they match that mission and vision that you and the board have put together. So it, it's been a, a pleasure working for all of you. You have been really a dream client. I think of you all as more friends and family than I do as clients. And one of the saddest parts of, of, of leaving is leaving my friends behind at Hala. Eric has been an incredible mentor. Eric has been an incredible mentor these last 10 years. You are, you are all in very good hands with him taking over the project. And then all, and then also leaving all of you as well. So it's been a pleasure.
Art, this is Roland. Thank you for your time, and I will miss you also. Good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Roland.
Art, we've been together for several years now and got to know that we have, like acquaintances. Actually, I think your relative and I went to school together. So I appreciate all that you've done. I, it's top-notch work and we'll miss you. So good luck.
Thank you.
Art, this is Chad. I appreciate all you've done and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
I'll mimic that too. Thank you, Art. This is Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Yeah.
This is Gary. Thank you, Art, for everything that you've done.
Thank you, everyone.
We're, we're going to miss you, Art. We wish you well and come back and see us. You can always drop in on a meeting. You know, you know when they are. You know the time and the place. So you're always welcome. And come back and see how it turns out.
Absolutely.
I will. I will definitely stop by to see the progress.
You need to be there for the ribbon cutting. So, all right. Okay, are we ready?
We're ready.
Ready to tackle this? All right. So pretty much I'll leave motions on each one of these individually. I wish we could package them up, but we can't. So I'll start with a big package A. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to approve the contract with Elder Corporation for base bid package A, earthwork and utilities for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School, Saydell High School at a cost of $760,000.
Chad, I'll second.
All right. Motion carries seven zero. And can I get a motion to approve this package B?
This Chad will make a motion to approve the contract with Jensen Builders Limited for base bid package B, concrete for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $1,115,500.
This is Roland. I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. And can I get a motion on bid package C?
This is Mike. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Course Lab Structures Incorporated for base bid package C, precast furnace for Woodside Middle School at a cost of $17,580.
Chad, I'll second.
You might want to check which line you're on. I think you might be off one.
There's two bid package Cs on there, so.
Yeah, there shouldn't have been a motion for the bid summary, which is four A.
Um, I don't think we did one.
I think the, all of the verbal parts have been right, but Beth, just check to make sure which one you're pushing the vote out on.
So Ri- Ryan Holland, can you, can you chime? We have two bid package Cs because one, one bid package has one of the schools and one of the bid bashes has two of the schools or, or something to that effect. Can you, can you weigh in on that?
Art, the, what it is, is bid package C, Course Lab Structures, has it for, was the apparent low for Woodside? There is the low bid for Woodside and bid package C Wells Concrete was the low for the high school. No precast concrete for Cornell.
Well, this is correct.
Thank you, Ryan.
No, it's correct then.
Just to kind of give background while everybody's voting, that was part of the purpose of separating these out was to get some savings. And Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but we received about $170,000 of savings by breaking those out by building.
Yep, that, that's correct. So a little bit of complexity went a long way there. So.
Okay. All right. Item D, bid package C, pass seven zero. Okay, so now can I get a motion on item E, bid package C, Wells Concrete?
This Chad will make a motion to approve the contract with Wells Concrete for bid, base bid package C, precast for Saydell High School at a cost of $575,167.
This is Roland. I'll second.
Only 17 more to go, everyone.
It's the alphabet, I'm saying. Motion carries seven zero. All right. So now we're on to item F, bid package D with Donner Steel.
This is Roland. Motion to approve contract with Donner Steel for base bid package D, structural steel for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $444,000 and $144,100. All right.
Chad, I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. Now for item G, bid package E with Jensen Builders.
This Chad will make a motion to approve the contract with Jensen Builders Limited for base bid package E, precast and structural steel for Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $364,900.
This is Michael. Second.
Motion carries seven zero. And can I get a motion on item H, bid package E with US Erectors?
This is Roland. Motion to approve the contract with US Erectors Inc. for base package E, precast and structural steel for Cornell, Cornell Elementary School at a cost of $77,000.
Chad, I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. And now a motion on item I, bid package F with Midwest Masonry.
This Chad will make a motion to approve the contract with Midwest Masonry Inc. for base bid package F, Masonry for Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $623,465.
This is Roland. I'll second it.
Motion carries seven zero. And a motion for item J, bid package F with Seedorf Masonry.
This is Roland. Motion to approve the contract with Seedorf Masonry for base bid package F, Masonry for Cornell Elementary School at a cost of $92,790.
Chad, I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. A motion on item K, bid package G, Lang Construction Group.
This is Chad. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Lang Construction Group for base bid package G, General Trades for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $2989,000.
Get a second?
This is Doug. I'll second.
Okay. Motion carries six zero with one abstain. Can I get a motion for item L, bid package H, H, Hillnebeck Shot? I'm not sure if I said that right.
This is Roland. Motion to approve the contract with HSI for base bid package H. Jimson Walls and Acrylic Ceilings for elementary, for Cornell Elementary Schools, Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $1850,000.
This Chad, I'll second.
I say you took the, the easy way out, Roland, but then you got the hard word.
They're called HSI out in the construction world.
Had I known, I wouldn't have butchered their name. Motion carries seven zero. All right. Item M, bid package I, Point Dexter Flooring.
This is Mike. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Point Dexter Flooring Inc. for base bid package I, flooring for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $510,237.
Chad, I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. Right now, item N, bid package J with Central States Roofing.
This Chad will make a motion to approve the contract with Central States Roofing for base bid package J, roofing in sheet metal for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $570,000.
This is Mike. I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. Motion on item O, bid package K, Elite Glass and Metal.
This is Mike. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Elite Glass and Metal LLC for base bid package K, glass and glazing for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $699,390.
Chad, I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. Onto item P for bid package L, Fire Protection Professionals.
This Chad will make a motion to approve the contract with Fire Protection Professionals for base bid package L, fire protection for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $494,000.
This is Roland. I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. Item Q, bid package M, AJ Allen Mechanical Contractors.
This is Michael. Make a motion to approve the contract with AJ Allen Mechanical Contractors Inc. for base bid package M, Mechanical for Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $2971,000.
Chad, I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. Number R, bid package M, LA Fulton and Sons.
This is Roland. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with LA Fulton and Sons for base bid package M, Mechanical for Cornell Elementary School at a cost of $786,000.
Chad, I'll second.
Chad, did you get that one?
Yeah, I sent it. I'm a yes.
All right. Motion carries seven zero. Item S, bid package N with Ramsey Company.
This Chad will make a motion to approve the contract with Ramsey Companies for base bid package N, peers for Woodside Middle School at a cost of $102,400.
This is Roland. I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. Item T, bid package zero. Oh, I guess Debris Electric, Inc.
This is Mike. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Debris Electric, Inc. for base bid package O, Electrical for Saydell High School at a cost of $1,500,000.
Chad, I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. Item U, bid package O, Van Man and Electric.
This Chad will make a motion to approve the contract with Van Man and Electric, Inc. for base bid package O, Electrical for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School at a cost of $906,000.
This is Roland. I'll second.
Did yours do something funky? I like got a JavaScript thing. Is that what you got? It is seven zero. Can you get back? Hang on. We're having a technical difficulty. Okay, all right. Motion carries seven zero. All right. I believe we're on item V, bid package P, Communication Innovators.
This Chad will make a motion to approve the contract with Communication Innovators for base bid package P, Communications for Cornell Elementary School, Woodside Middle School and Saydell High School at a cost of $215,357.
This is Mike. I'll second.
Yeah, it was weird after I posted my vote, it, it changed the button to like the JavaScript language. Yeah. Motion carries seven zero. There is a, what's that? There is an F. Okay, six zero with one abstaining. And item And item W bid package Q Rapids Food Service.
This is Mike. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Rapids Food Service Contract and Design for Base Bid Package Q Kitchen Equipment for Saydell High School at a cost of $325,884.
This is Chad. I'll second.
Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Excited to have that done and get started here. What's the ground thaws and all of that? Okay. Go ahead and move on to. Our school athletic track resurfacing project for 2021. I need a motion to approve. Plans, specifications, et cetera.
This is Chad. I'll make a motion to approve the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Saydell Community School District 2021 High School Athletic Track Resurfacing Project.
This is Mike. I'll second.
Discussion? Go ahead and vote, and then we'll actually discuss once we come up with the contract. Motion carries seven zero. Now I need a motion to approve the contract.
This is Chad. I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the 2021 High School Athletic Track Resurfacing Project for Midwest Tennis and Track at a cost of $99,618.
This is Mike. I'll second.
Okay, now discussion.
Yeah, I'll let Levi chime in here in a moment. But many of you know that the track has been in poor shape for a short while now. We've had it repaired a number of different times. Midwest Tennis actually did the repairs. And so obviously, we're, you know, not using it quite as much this last year, but the reality is it is in dire need of being replaced. Levi, what other comments do you have about the track replacement that we're recommending here with this bid?
Yeah, so Midwest did take care of some temporary repairs this fall. There was some separation as key joints around the track where they start start and stop laying that top. Top surface. So their their resurfacing will be for the oval. The oldest part of the surface. It's actually from before the stadium was built. So like the home side and some of the markings are still on the east side. When everything's been been flopped to the to the finish line at the on the west side. The D zone, which is the south part where the high jump events go on, and then the long jump runways are newer, those aren't being replaced. It's basically going to get. Just the just the oval. And then there's a structural spray that can go on at a later date. I mean, we're talking down the down the road, which would actually get. Extend the lifespan of the D zone and the runways for the long jump that would actually put everything then on then on the same rotation that one day when it needs to be redone, it would be all the surfaces. Down the road eventually. But this is this is where the state of the 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 track surface is kind of right now. It's really the the oval that is the the top priority, I guess, to get resurfaced.
All right. Thank you, Levi.
Todd, if I may jump into for those that weren't able to join the operations committee on this, is this the bid that came in quite a bit lower than what we were expecting?
Yes. We were actually anticipating around and Levi, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we projected this to cost around $140,000.
Correct.
Yep.
I think that's that's great news and what an opportunity to get that resurfaced at a good price. I think it's also a great talking point for when we're when we're talking to constituents about where we're spending our money that this was actually a savings force and something that needed to be done. So I just want to make sure the whole board was aware of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Motion carries seven zero. And I need a motion to approve purchase of the football scoreboard. Everybody still there?
This is Mike. I'll go and make a motion to approve the purchase of the Daktronics Live Video Display Scoreboard and Sound System from Daktronics at a cost of $225,731. Installation of video display on new I-beams and concrete footings from Pro Image Science at a cost of $26,918.75. An installation of new network cabling from the football press box to video display board from Tesdelelectric at a cost of $17,517.
This is Chad. I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
So many of you know that our scoreboard has not been in great working order. We had several issues over the past few years. And so Levi spent a lot of time really doing a lot of research around what types of models we might want without and actually looked at a number of different scoreboards. So Levi, go ahead and give us a lowdown on a scoreboard that you're recommending here for the board tonight.
Yep. So the the current board out there obviously is is aged. We did have some issues this year with with running that. Started looking at what what we wanted to go with. All of our other products in at the baseball and softball fields and in the gyms. Woodside and at the high school are Daktronic products. What's nice about that is there's interchangeability with the score controls. And then also the video board would be the same software that we have that we use inside as well. So so started looking at Daktronics. Really took a good hard look at two different options. One was the full video board. The other one was with the four foot scoreboard fixed board at the bottom and then that that top video display, which is about 13 feet in height and then 24 feet wide approximately. Looked at those two options, visited with Southeast Polk, Johnston, Williamsburg, and talked with several companies too. In my opinion, the the fixed board is still the way to go because it's the tried and true. Operation because if you know, if for some reason you lose video, whether it's through malfunction or operator error, and you lose the time on the board, the game can't continue unless you have the the game clock. The four foot fixed board there at the bottom allows you to obviously still run the time, still be able to have a game if there's ever any difficulties with the with the video function. And it was also more cost effective, too. You spend a little less money on the full video to. On a smaller video display rather than the full video display. And then the rendering also has. Along the top that the middle new sound cabinets and then display trusses and then some signage fixed signage is there along the bottom as well. As as all part of the same package. So I think if you want to scroll down, there should be another rendering of of what it'll look like out there. One thing that's nice is this will be able to be used for track and field as well. And then since we run our cross country meets beginning and finishing on the football field too, we can use it for the cross country meets, display results. As events are happening and and there's also some revenue capabilities of it too to generate some revenue. Constantly scrolling sponsorships. You can do a lot of different things from commercials to title sponsors. So having like a touchdown sponsor and, you know, first down sponsor and so on and so forth, where it gives us a lot more capabilities to start generating some different revenue streams out there for all the different events, along with the opportunity to really highlight some of our all of our all of our participating students, whether that's a football highlight film or hype video, the player introductions to introducing the band and senior nights, all the different things that you can do out there. You know, really would would make our student experience, you know, one of a kind.
Levi, one of the questions that I know we talked about, and again, I know the answer, but I'd like you to talk to the board about it. How old is the current scoreboard? Just to give us an idea how, you know, the age of that piece of equipment.
Yep. So the so there's a little bit of a story with the current scoreboard. It was won and donated by KCCI. So. There's a there's some pride that goes into that. I think there's a unique story behind it. The actual structure. Is is old. Well, before the stadium was remodeled. Mr. Russell, who's a teacher here at the high school, he he, again, I didn't count up the years, but he. Said that he played under it as a junior high kid, as a junior high student here at Saydell. So. So it's it's getting up there in its in its years. The digits were replaced from light bulbs to the digital. Numbers when they redid the stadium. About eight years ago, eight to nine years ago. But I imagine that was a cost saving step that they took when they redid the the football and and track stadium was they kept the current scoreboard but just redid the digits. In my opinion, you know, this was this is kind of the last puzzle piece out there. We have a beautiful facility. A lot, you know, everybody walks, you know, comes to a game or comes to a meet is always impressed by what we have to offer here. This is kind of the last, I guess, topping. On that on that facility out there is to get an updated. Display of. For video and for the score, too.
All right. Levi, didn't you say that the boosters were going to pay for part of that, too?
Yep. So so I've been in talks with them too about identifying some either fundraising or some revenue streams to take. The goal would be for them to be able to cover the the installation price. Some of those plans and fundraising would 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 come from sponsorships of the board as well upon upon approval.
Thanks, Levi.
Motion carries six one. Great. Now I need a motion to approve. One AC chapter 103.
Yep, I will go chapter 103.
Policy. And I know this did not go before policy committee, so I really can't. Wondering why they haven't seen it before.
This is Jen. I'll make a motion to approve the following accordance with Iowa Administrative Code Chapter 103 Updates to Policy 503.05 Adoption of New Regulations and Exhibits 503.06 503.06 R1 503.06 E1 506.06 E3 and waive the second reading.
This is Doug. I'll second it.
Discussion?
I'm not sure if Amy is still on or not. I'm certain if she is, I'd certainly love her to chime in as she's the expert in this area. But know that I vote has changed. And so the idea is is that we got very, very short notice through the policy primer that this has to be taken care of by the end of January. And this is one of the reasons why we asked that we waived that second reading to go ahead and get this achieved. Make no mistake about it. Policy is something that we have to abide by and align to. And so again, we're just asking that you go ahead and approve this and waive that second request. Amy, is there other things you'd like to add to this, just to add clarity to the changes that we're seeking here?
Yeah, just just real quick, because I know it's late. Chapter 103. This has actually been something that has Board of Education has actually been working on for a while, and it was supposed to go for approval back in March. And then with COVID, everything got pushed back. So it went in front of the board November 8, the Iowa Department of Education on November 18. Then we received several conversations with ours. So that's why there's such a short turnaround because they have just approved it on November 18. And then there just had a lot of things had to be worked out as exactly how schools should address that in their policies, what kind of documentation the state is requiring. So that was all brought to us on December 23rd. And then now we're moving because the policy, no matter what, if we chose not to waive the second reading and not have it in board policy, the chapter 103 is still intact. Like we can't say, oh, no, we didn't follow that because our board hadn't voted it yet. It's chapter 103 is the Iowa code that we had to follow. So that's kind of where we're at and why we're asking for waiving the second reading, just because it needs to be implemented by January 20th, whether or not it's a board policy. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Amy, can we get a little bit of clarification on this? I understand we don't really have an option necessarily to to go or not. I'm not a huge fan of passing policy without reviewing it. Can we get an overview of why this is being pushed or if there are any changes in place?
And this has to do with a lot of advocacy groups. We could talk about this for a long time. Just there is parent advocacy groups. Had there was some complaints about how restraint and seclusion has been used in some school districts. So a case came about through that there started to become investigations across the state of Iowa and how we're using seclusion and restraint. So with that, the Iowa Department of Education. We it went back and forth. There was a lot of communications. Unfortunately, it was written without any communication with. People that are involved in the educational field on a day to day basis. So that went back and forth. Is all this is just the law. We have to follow it and we don't really get a say in it. So the policy, you know, is limiting some of the things like, you know, how long a student is in with seclusion. It's really beefing up our documentation, which, you know, I don't have a problem with that because, you know, as long as we have the documentation, then that helps us if there's ever a questions about what we did. So it has a lot with, you know, changing how you're documenting, how often you're having meetings with parents to try and improve. Like if a kid is in seclusion several times throughout the school year, like what are you doing? So. It has a lot to do with that. It changed our. Seclusionary rooms are how big they are. So that's not going to be impacted to us as much because we already put that in our plans with the new bond. So that's already taken care of with us. So that's just a lot of this stuff that it has to do with. We don't really have a choice because it's Iowa code and we have to follow it regardless if our policies put in. If we if a parent made a complaint and we didn't follow it, we'd be in trouble because it's part of the code and we don't have a choice. We can't just say, oh, it's not in our policy, so we're not following it. And that's the attorneys brought that up to us all at my last meeting with them regarding this. And we've been meeting with them about every two weeks. Staying updated with this.
Thank you, Amy.
Questions on that?
Waiting on Jen yet? Motion carries seven zero. Oh, sorry. Motion carries six one. All right. And now I need a motion to adjourn.
This is Jen. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
This is Doug. I'll second. And Brian Bowman would be amazed.
The late hour. The late hour.
Did we just set a record?
Definitely.
Maybe, I remember 10 o'clock night once, but yeah. All right, motion carries seven zero, we'll adjourn at 10:26. Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you, everybody, for all your time today.
Thank you all.